Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Select Board of February 27, 2024. This is a hybrid meeting, so the following notice must be read into the record. This is the advisory required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. An act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency signed into law on June 16, 2021 is extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Select Board will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, February 27, 2024, at 5:30 p.m., beginning with executive session. And then, opening to the public no sooner than 6 p.m. in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. And on our website, there are the instructions for joining by computer or by mobile. So as the notice said, and I did read it rather rapidly, we will first be discussing a legal matter, and that matter is listed on the executive session item as follows. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will consider entering into executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation involving Blue Sky Towers, it looks like Roman Number 3 LLC, 1044 Route 28 South Yarmouth. So I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session for those purposes.
Second?
Let's have a roll call vote on that, Peter.
Yes.
Dorcas.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are in executive session. We will return to public session at the conclusion of our executive session business.
Had a couple of things that were supposed to be on for approval of golf and...
Good evening. Welcome to the public session of the meeting of the Yarmouth Select Board of February 27, 2024. The required, this is a hybrid meeting, which means it can be accessed remotely as well as someone coming in here and participating live. And we've read the required legal notices on that. So the next item would be to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. We have four members present, and we have a selectman, Mark Forrest, who will be participating remotely. Mark, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you just fine, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah, I was wondering for a minute whether you're going after the roast beef. It'd be okay. So you're with us. First item is public announcements, and to be recognized is our town clerk, Mary Maslowski.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to take a moment and give some friendly reminders about the upcoming presidential primary. In-person early voting is going on in this hearing room Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday this week during regular business hours, which is 8:30 to 4:30. So if anyone wishes to vote early, you are welcome to come and join us. We will be fully staffed for the remainder of the week. In addition, if someone has a vote-by-mail ballot that they wish to actually use and cast, then we would ask that it get returned to the town clerk's office no later than 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, March 5, which is Election Day. Those ballots are required to be received in our office prior to the close of the polls. So if they arrive at 8:02, they will not be counted. If you want to cast those ballots, then to please get them to our office by mail or by drop-off. They can use the drop box, which is by the side door, or bring them into the office and hand-carry them in. In addition to that, just a friendly reminder, the polling locations are all at the same polling locations they were for our last elections. Precinct 1 votes at the Congregational Church on 6A. Precinct 7 votes at Kingsway Golf Course on 6A. And all of the other precincts, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, and 8A, all vote at the Senior Center. So polls will be open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So we're looking forward to a good turnout for the presidential preference primary.
Mary, as I recall from the past, you don't want the mail-in ballots to be put in the post office. You want them to be delivered either in Town Hall or in our mailbox outside the side door so that you can get them more expeditiously and increase the chance that they'll be counted.
Certainly, if people want to ensure that they're there, it's safest to hand-carry it, although the post office has been excellent with delivering our ballots and delivering them on time, not holding them and getting them to us. So they are postage prepaid by the Commonwealth being returned to us. So really, all they really need to do is make sure they sign that ballot envelope that's inside and drop the outer envelope in the mail. So either way...
And again, if somebody has the mail-in ballots but decides that they would prefer to go vote, let's say that somebody just got a Republican ballot, and they say, "Well, you know, I want to vote the Democratic ballot," they can still show up in person and vote, correct?
So the only way they can do that is to show up in person.
Yeah.
So if...
Assuming they don't fill out the other ballot.
Correct. So if someone mistakenly asked for a Republican ballot, decides now they want a Democratic ballot, or vice versa, and they're unenrolled, mind you, then they can vote either in person Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and pick the other ballot, or they can go to the polls on Tuesday and pick the other ballot that they want. Otherwise, you're married to the ballot for your party. If you're a Democrat, you are required to take the Democratic ballot. If you're a Republican, you're required to take the Republican ballot.
Unenrolled that could make that election, okay.
Correct.
Got it.
So yes, they're welcome to come and vote in person the rest of this week or on Tuesday.
Right. Mary, question. Assuming that I've got a mail ballot, and you said it has to be dropped off by 8 o'clock here or at any polling place?
It has to be returned to Town Hall.
Has to be physically...
So it has to be returned to Town Hall. We cannot accept any vote-by-mail ballots that are voted at the precinct. If you show up at the precinct with a ballot, we're going to suggest you either bring it to Town Hall or actually vote separately, and we will void that ballot. We cannot accept the ballots at the precincts, and the reason being is those ballots come here to Town Hall. We check them in on the computer system to make sure that you haven't voted already, and that way, when it goes to the polls, we will know whether we can count that ballot or not. It's our check and balance against people trying to vote twice.
Right. I assumed that, but I just wanted to make sure that people knew that it has to come here, and somebody in your office will monitor it at 8 o'clock, and if you show up at 8:01...
Absolutely.
You're out of luck.
We check that ballot box at 8:00 p.m. and lock it, and we know that after 8:00, if anything is in there the next morning, we know those ballots were received too late and can't be counted. And then we bring any of those ballots that were received by 8:00 to the polls to be counted at the precincts.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. Mary, on a related topic, we also have a town election coming up.
Yes.
I understand papers are available now. When do they have to be returned by?
They have to be returned by April 2, I believe. Let me just double-check. Yes, the last day to poll nomination papers is Friday, March 29. The last day to return them is Tuesday, April 2, by 5:00 p.m. in our office.
And are you aware what, how many seats are available this election?
There are two seats available for Board of Selectmen. There is one seat available for Dennis Yarmouth Regional School Committee.
The reason I mention this is that I've indicated to the town manager and to the board that I'll not be running for reelection. So I just wanted to announce that to the public. Serving as a selectman is a wonderful opportunity to get to know the people in the town, to learn more about how the town operates, and I'd really encourage many, many people to really seriously consider running for the Board of Selectmen. If you need any more information, you certainly can talk to Mary, but I also would be willing to sit down with anybody just to walk you through the process. But we struggle sometimes getting good people to step forward to serve on boards, and particularly this board. So I wanted to mention this now so that people are aware and that hopefully we'll have a robust group of people running for election. Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder.
So, Mary, were you going to also speak again about the presidential primary?
I am.
And the police thing? So why don't we do this? Since you're there, why don't we skip over public comment and have you go to that item?
Happy to.
Which is as follows. 2024 Presidential Primary Election Matters: Police Officer Assignments, Vote-by-Mail and In-Person Early Voting Precincts and Polling Locations. So that's a 615 item, and we're past 615. Let's do that, and then we can excuse you and go to public comment.
Perfect. Thank you. So the 2022 Votes Act now requires that before every election, the Board of Selectmen assign police officers to the polling locations. What we've done in years past is what I'm asking you to do again this evening, is to refer that duty back to the Chief of Police in consultation with me and my office so that we can have the polling locations properly staffed by the police officers. The intent is to make sure that they are properly secured and that the election workers and the ballots are secured throughout the elections. There's a motion included in the letter. It's the same motion we've taken in years past and for other elections. It's just a formality that has flown out of the 2022 Votes Act.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I hereby move that the Board of Selectmen delegate its authority given under Chapter 92, Section 72 of the Acts of 2022 to detail a sufficient number of police officers and constables for each building that contains a polling place for one or more precincts at every election, therein to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to the elections to the Chief of Police in consultation with the town clerk.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And because we have Mark remotely, I'm going to do this as a roll call vote. All those in favor will start with Dan.
Aye.
Dorcas.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You have anything else, Mary?
That is all I needed from you for this election this evening.
Thank you.
Would you like me to stay later for Town Election Matters? I'm happy to.
Thanks, I think we should be outside.
Okay.
Okay, the skipped item we will return to is public comment. If anybody wishes to be heard on public comment, please either come up front to the table or go to the podium. Please speak directly and clearly into the microphone, announce your name and address, and then make your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board of Selectmen. Tom Nacanella from the very historic village of Bass River. Just like to give you a little update. About 10 days ago, we had a big community event here in town. It was a wintery winter carnival. It was kind of very blustery those days, but our community came out and engaged. We had a wonderful attendance on our synthetic ice rink, which brought in over 250 people. And it was, for the 15 hours I was there, it was three days, five hours a day. It was totally enjoyed by the little future ones of our community, and that was very important. On another note, we have about 264 hours before the next event, and that will be the Cape Cod St. Patrick's Day Parade right here in Yarmouth. The St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee would like to thank everybody for all their help, and we'd like to extend thanks to our DPW, which would be working hard in 264 hours, and for everybody else that's involved with making this great event happen. And we hope to see you all there. And one more note, Mr. Horgan, I did pull my papers. Thank you very much, and I'll take you up on your offer. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Someone on the screen later.
Yeah. Remind me on that, Dan, when we finish with the items. Good evening.
Good evening. Lindsay Pietro. I live at 10 Tallpines in Yarmouth Port, and I am here again to advocate on behalf of your support for the school budget, which is on the agenda tonight. And I think our town has done a remarkable job of looking towards the future, as is evidenced with a long overdue wastewater project. And these young people still really need this support from us to recover both emotional well-being as well as academic. And supporting the requests from Dr. Smith and the school committee, I would urge us to look into our free cash reserves in an attempt to fund what we find is a, what is it called, like a conglomerate of bad timing with budget and funding that's being diminished from the federal government, and the needs of our kids still there. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Vita Morris is on the screen.
Vita, can you hear me?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, hallelujah. After all these times that I wasn't able to join via the Zoom, I finally can do it. And I just wanted to say I wasn't able to do the same yesterday with the Town Seal Committee meeting, unfortunately. So I'm going to say a couple of words just that I would have wanted to say last night to that committee. They seem to be, you know, going full steam ahead in spite of the fact that they apparently received a letter from Mr. Whedon of the Wampanoag tribe, I guess, people whom they have been pestering for a response to whatever they were asking. And unfortunately, I think they didn't get the kind of support that they were looking for because I think there was a mention right away of the fact that he was missing the figure that is in the seal right now, which I think was very interesting because I think at least one of you on this board had mentioned the same thing. And the whole new proposal just sort of seems to be like some kind of a generic thing with this big tree dominating and with no particular, you know, connection to something that would be, you know, connected to Yarmouth per se. And also in spite of the fact that the state had proposed to do the same, make a change in the state seal, and when I guess they looked around a little bit, they just found, they would have been spending millions and millions of dollars in order to do so. So they quietly pulled it back, and it's no longer under consideration. I really hope that that committee will just... By the way, I hope that if they give you a packet, because they're coming before this board, I guess, sometime soon again, and that the letter from Mr. Whedon, a copy of it, will be included in that presentation. But anyway, I just hope that they start thinking and doing some real, you know, cost figures. I was just working with some paperwork for tax filing, and everything that comes from the town, every piece of paper has the seal. I mean, I don't know whether they've taken that into consideration even when they were doing the costing and stuff like that. So anyway, this is sort of an indirect message to that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Vita.
Dick Donovan.
Dick Donovan? Dick, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Chairman. I want to comment on the Lynx Passholder membership. Sorry that I couldn't make the last meeting, but I had a conflict. I preferred I would have made that one. For those who don't know, Lynx memberships run from April to the first weekend, December, eight months. With the reconstruction going on, Lynx Passholders lose 37.5% of their season and are being asked to pay the same or more than they paid last year. Full-paying Passholders lose some access, but significantly less than Lynx Passholders. When completed, the full-paying Passholders gain access seven days a week to the white course, what is known as the white course, an increase of 48 tee times per week. Lynx members do not gain any additional access as far as more playing time. I believe that, given the fact that Lynx members are losing 37.5% of their season, that they should in fact receive a discount, maybe something around 25% of last year's fee, or access during the season, during the construction period, to Bayberry and Bass River after 2:00 p.m. for tee times. You may hear that a Passover will recoup their costs by only playing seven or eight rounds, but this isn't about recouping your cost. It's about equitable treatment and value compared to other Passholders. The renovations anticipated are great for everybody, but there are no guarantees that they will be completed on time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. That's all. Okay. Is nobody on the screen that reads, anybody else here that wants to be recognized on public comment before we move on? Yes, sir. You can come up front if that's easier for you and try to speak directly into the microphone and give us your name and address.
I'm Frank Fields. I have, for the past three years, I've had membership in the Lynx, and I live at Kingsway, and I've brought three other members from Kingsway to have membership in the Lynx. I'm asking that we be allowed during the construction season of the Lynx that we be allowed to play one of the other nine holes at Bayberry. I'm sure that we can be accommodated at Bayberry either in the afternoon on the red course or the blue course. The golf membership at the Lynx has been a healthy addition to the finance of the Lynx over the past three or more years. And I feel that we should be continued to be encouraged to play the Lynx by accommodating us at one of the other two nine-hole courses at Bayberry.
Good. Thank you very much. We'll raise that issue with our golf director when we return to that budget item. I mean, excuse me, that agenda item.
Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
No, there's one in the corner.
Okay, coming up. Or come on down, whichever.
I'd like to just say that I'm here in support of the Music Room. I've been down there three or four nights a week as the host, talking to people from the community. And since I've been there...
Can you please state your name and your address first, please?
My name's Alan Arena, and I'm from Dennisport. I'm 4.7 miles from the Music Room, and I go down there three or four times a week. I'm also caregiver of a disabled veteran. My time is very valuable, but I do participate with the Music Room. I think they're a valuable...
Are you here to say you're supporting the Music Room?
I think they're a valuable asset to the community because...
Okay, can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
First of all, I think there's going to be a request to have that continued, that matter, tonight. And secondly, that would be a disciplinary hearing, and so public comment would be irrelevant to that hearing once we go forward. The only thing that'd be relevant to that hearing would be the facts. This happened, this didn't happen, you know, whatever. So, I mean, you can say what you want to say, but this isn't, this isn't, I love the Music Room versus I don't.
Okay. I just came down here to show my support.
I understand.
And to say, I think they're, I believe they're a valuable member...
And again, it looks like that's not going to go forward tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Next item, we're going to continue with the golf, second hearing on the golf fee increase. We have had an initial review of the requests, a presentation by Golf Enterprise Committee and our golf director. But we always, on fee increases, hold two hearings. Make sure everybody that wants an opportunity to be heard can do that. So far, and most of what we heard is in support of the fees increases. People seem to be happy with the importance of, of course, is the condition, the plan to keep them in a superior condition. That's most of what we've heard. Tonight, we've heard some concern about some members with the Lynx passes, which I want to know if you have any suggestions on that when we get to it. Are we going to do another brief run-through, Bob, on that or not, on the presentation we got last week? It's cleaned?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same presentation as the last time.
Oh, I'm sure. It wasn't, it wasn't that I was wondering if it was different. It was, I was wondering if it was going to be shown for people who didn't see it before.
Yep.
But while they're looking at that, why don't you proceed and identify yourself and the committee members that are present with you.
Sure. Thank you for having us.
And speak loudly and directly into the microphone, please.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for having us. I'm Scott Gilmore, Director of Golf for the Town Yarmouth.
I'm Dennis Hoy, the Head Golf Professional for Yarmouth Golf.
I believe we have a few members of the Golf Committee present. Ted Deckel and Doreen are here. You heard from Dick Donovan, who's also a member, and a couple more members of the staff are available as well. Do I need to read this into it again?
No, we've read the fee increases. I can, if you think it's necessary, I can go. Bob, what do you think on that?
No, I think it's all set. It's just a continuance of...
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary. They're all within the 5%. Some are a little less than.
Correct.
Why don't you just tell us, maybe I can help you, just the overall general reason why you feel the fee increase should be made? What do you try to accomplish by increasing the fees? Tell the public about that.
Our reasoning to increase the fees is to continue to give into the golf courses, to continue to make sure they're in great conditioning so that we can continue to move the operation forward. You know, it may not be a ton of money that comes out of the fee increase, but is definitely needed as everything is, as we said in the presentation last time, that costs are rising for fertilizers, chemicals, everything to upkeep the courses is rising, even just, you know, putting gas in the golf carts. So we want to make sure that the... So, we want to make sure that the golf courses are always in great shape, so members and the public want to play them, and that's the reasoning behind the fee increase, so we can continue that.
So, it's really twofold. One is to keep up with the maintenance costs of things like fertilizer and so forth, excuse me, and the other is to maintain the quality of the courses.
Correct.
Okay. Could you just speak briefly about the concern that was raised tonight? It just came up. I've had probably no more notice than you did that there's this issue of equity, if you will. They seem to, you know, I'm not a golfer, unfortunately, so I don't understand all the logistics, but they seem to want some more playing time on the other courses to compensate for playing time. They're going to lose during the construction period is, I think that was the concern, wasn't it?
Right, that seems...
Can you do that? Can you help them in that way?
It's going to be difficult to help that. I mean, the Lynx Pass is a certain pass that is restricted anyways. That doesn't open until 12 o'clock, so it is...
What time?
12 o'clock every day. So, it is a restriction anyways going forward, and we did that to have a great price on that course. Now, we're also doing a big-time construction project to make sure it's open more often than it ever has been. There's days where we can't open it during the spring because it's underwater or whatnot. We can't mow it, we can't do anything because of the rain and whatnot. So, we're trying to fix it up to make sure it's in great condition going forward, which is the reasoning behind the project. So, it's not like we have unlimited availability to send people everywhere to the other golf courses. We also have other passes that they could take. I mean, it's not, there are days where we accommodate Lynx Course up at the top if we have to shut it down for the day because we got too much rain, but to ask for that for the whole time that the construction is going on is pretty hard for us to accommodate, so...
What was, what was their percentage increase going to be?
It was...
What was the Lynx increase going to be, from what to what?
360 to 375.
And again, I'm just, I'm just...
One thing if I could...
Talking out loud here, excuse me.
One thing if I could, because what we were, since the Lynx, we're not sure exactly the date it's going to be available to be open. We're planning on not selling them until we have a better idea of when the course is going to be available, because otherwise we'd have people paying into something we don't know if they're going to even be able to get. Most likely, it's going to be done by July, but in cases of delay, like we had the snow, which pushed us back a couple weeks just recently, so those are the things you have to take into account. So, we're probably not even going to be selling them until we get closer to the time when we know it's going to be available to be played upon, and in that time, we could look at doing a different type of rate at that point.
Is it possible it gives them some relief on the increase to put a hold on that particular increase in view of the fact that they're going to potentially lose some time?
Yeah, we could put a hold on the increase for the season, that's...
That'd be a big deal?
No. That's definitely okay to do for us.
Yeah, I'm just trying to address their concern, see if there's a way to address their concern.
I understand their concern, the Lynx Pass players to the Lynx, but it's not just a concern for them, it's a concern for everybody, because if you're a regular Passholder, you can't go out there and play either. So, it's, we run multiple different courses through Bayberry, and we can't run the other courses because it's closed down too, so...
I kind of got, I kind of got this, I kind of got this image in my mind, it's probably not fair, but it's like, I'm going to charge you more for the candy bar, but it's going to be three less ounces, you know? It's, for the person who's paying the fee or the consumer, that's kind of difficult for them to understand or even accept.
Right.
And again, I don't golf, so I'm not, I don't have any vested interest in any of this.
We could definitely pause that one.
You know, I just, so, okay, that would be, does, I want to try to see if I can move this along. Does anybody want to be, let's try to separate this out. Does anybody want to be heard in any manner against the fee increases or any of the proposed fee increases, other than the concerns we heard tonight? No. So, I think, my understanding is a general acceptance of the fee increases based on what we've heard so far. So, not hearing anything from the public, so let's hold on that one item, and let's go to the board and see if they have any questions or concerns. Mark, do you have any commentary or any suggestions or concerns about any of these fee increases?
No, I think, I think we've heard a very strong case for the proposal, and I'm supportive.
Okay, Dan?
I have no questions with regard to the fee increases. Are we addressing anything else at this point?
No.
Okay.
Marcus?
No questions on the fee increase?
Peter?
You say, this is on the Lynx in particular, you say you're not, you're not going to even sell the Lynx passes until you know when the construction's going to be done.
Right.
Do you have a, do you have a rough idea of when you think it'll be done, or what you hope, hope it'll be done, might be a better way to put it?
Yeah, we're projecting for July 1, tentatively, is what our prediction, that we could open it back up. Now, we obviously have to have some good weather starting here. We got delayed with the snow.
Right.
And hopefully, we don't get three inches of rain as projected that might happen tomorrow, but as we can move forward into better weather, they can get a lot done, hopefully, in some good weather and move it along, so...
I got a tour last year of all the improvements that you plan to make at the Lynx Course, and I think when it's done, it's going to be a much, much better course and be able to be used much, much more often.
Right.
Outside that, I don't know if you question, because I'm assuming we will discuss and make a motion on the Lynx area of this in, as a separate...
Yeah, I would like to get the board's feelings separately on that. I think, as you, I think, properly identified, right now, I'm just kind of looking how we feel about the general proposal to increase the fees.
The general proposal, I think it's, I think it's fine. I think it was well put together, and the use of, the use of the increase of the fees is, is well described and important to keep, keep the course, the course up to date, and the few golfers I know haven't said anything negative to me at all. And the first, the first negative items I heard were on the Lynx Course, and I understand, understand their, their issue, but otherwise, I think the fee, fees make very good sense.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody want to be heard on the issue of supporting the fee increases? Anybody new? Is somebody raising their hand there? Who's that?
No.
Dick Donovan.
Was it?
Dick Donovan.
Is that Dick? Dick, do you want to be heard again on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I'm, I'm in support of all of the increases other than the Lynx.
What did he say?
He's in support, except for the Lynx.
Except for Lynx, okay. Yeah, I know he had a concern with Lynx. Let's talk about Lynx. I want to first go to our Director. Can you live with a hold on that increase on Lynx?
Yes, we could.
It's not going to be a big deal, is it? Do you think that that's the most, the easiest and the most, was what I want to say, practical way to resolve that concern?
Yes, I feel that would be the most practical at this time.
And you do agree?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, how does the board feel about approving the increases except for the Lynx increase? How do you feel about that, Peter?
I would be, I would be in favor of it. A little bit of hesitation, because if, if it's 360 and it doesn't open up until the end of August, but you wouldn't be selling, if you're there, you're not going to be selling it anyways.
Yeah, the worst thing you can do is collect and then have to refund everybody, because it would be a, you know, an issue at that point, so...
It, it sounds like, it doesn't sound like, you guys have it under control. If, if it's not going to be open, it's not going to get, no one's going to pay. No one's, no one's going to get hurt, and hopefully, we'll get some good weather and we'll get it done quickly and stuff. So, I, so I think leaving, leaving the, leaving the Lynx fee, you know, where it sits for at least for this year, I think makes good sense.
Okay, thank you, Marcus.
I agree.
Okay, Dan?
I guess I'm still confused, because if, first of all, you sell memberships prior to the year beginning. You sold quite a few of them, I understand. So, some Lynx Course memberships have already been sold.
With, every one of them was told that if it wasn't going to be, if, we didn't know when the construction was going to be able to be started at that point, so we told every, there was only eight, and the eight people were told that if that didn't work out for them, they could be refunded.
I understand the restrictions on the Lynx Course. What's the difficulty with possibly offering access to courses after 2:00 p.m.? I mean, we always were trying to get people to use those times anyway.
Well, we have, we have a new Twilight membership, which is after 2:00 p.m. now.
And how extensive is that?
That's just started the last couple of years. We have probably like 80 to 90 people. It's about the same, it's a little less than what the Lynx membership is, but that cost is $800.
Okay.
The Lynx membership is $360.
Okay, that's quite a difference.
It's quite a big difference, so, so you hate to take away times from people that are, you know, putting more in.
The Twilight gives you access to all 35.
To all the courses, yeah.
So, it, it doesn't just affect the Lynx members, it affects the whole membership, because they have access to all of it as well. So, if they can't play at the Lynx, they're going to play somewhere else on another course. So, it's going to be busier at each one of the facilities. So, it's going to be hard for us to be able to accommodate that.
All right, so everybody, considering the Lynx membership has eyes open at this point, knowing that they're probably not going to have access till July?
Right, and we, either which way, we would have had to close, whether we did it early in the season or later in the season, but we got a great contract that was able to, we scheduled it and tried to get it done as quick as possible to open it for the majority of the season was our, was our goal. So, if we can open by July 1, we have a lot of the season left to be able to...
When you, when you buy a membership, regardless of what kind, when does it start? When does it end? Is it January 1st?
Nope, it's April 1 to March 30th.
So, is there any way to discount it further so that people, they're not even going to be able to start till July 1 or July 17th or whatever? Can't you possibly discount it further? Because they're not going to have access. Have you looked at that?
We have looked at it, but the thing is, you're putting a $3 million renovation, basically, into that course to bring it up to a different level. So, from my standpoint, I think it's really difficult sometimes to discount something after you've put all this money into the infrastructure of it to try to make more revenue out of it down the road, so...
Yeah, it was, it was never open all the time. It was always limited based on the weather or the restriction of the 12. It's because of the issues out there. It was never, like, it was, that's why we wanted to do all the work, to make sure we can have it available at all times.
I understand all of the competing interests you've got going here. It just seems that foregoing the 5% increase doesn't quite get you there to make it equitable. And I appreciate you can't maybe start it from the date when you are able to open the courses, but maybe you could offer something a little bit more than the 5%. That's my thinking, anyway, at this point.
Are you saying, though, that if the timing is such, you're just not going to have the Lynx Pass this year? If it turns out that it's pushed too far into the...
We don't, we don't foresee that to happen at this time.
You think that you'll have your Lynx Pass?
Yes. We haven't had any of the, the contractors let us know that that would happen. We project to be done and ready to open for that July 1 date, if not earlier.
And specifically, what is the Lynx Pass? What's the difference between that and a regular, and any of the other passes?
It's, it's regulated to just the Lynx Course only, which is a nine-hole Lynx Course, and tee times are restricted till 12 o'clock or after. No morning tee times.
Okay, and then if you have weather permitting, you're saying also?
Yep.
But you're anticipating that with the, with the upgrades that you're doing to the course, that weather permitting is going to be going away?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Mark, do you, can you live with hold exempting the increase for the Lynx Annual Pass and approving the rest of the proposed increases?
Yeah, if that's, if that's where the board's going with this, I'll be supportive.
You support that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like one of our members to make a motion to approve all of the proposed increases for the golf fees, with the exception of the Lynx Annual Pass, which shall remain at $360 and not be increased to $375?
We seem to have somebody that would like to speak.
Can you split those?
Huh?
Can you split those motions, just so that...
I can.
It'd be easier that way.
Okay, yes, you have something to say?
Yes.
At the microphone?
You gotta go to the microphone, sir, so people can hear.
I can speak loud on that.
They can't hear you at home.
Well, you might not be able to reach the people at home, but do what you will.
It's not the costs, it's the availability. I'm being shut out from playing golf for at least three months. That, that's not being taken care of. I deserve to have the availability of the golf course like anybody else. And right now, I'm being told that I will not be able to play golf this year until July. I think that I should be accommodated somehow. There's enough flexibility to the running of Bayberry to fit me in and my friends.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing with a second. I'm going to go for a roll call vote on that. Peter?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
I vote aye too. So, the public portion is closed. Do you want to make a motion on these?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the fee increases as presented by the Golf Director. With the, with the exception of the Lynx Course, I'd like to take that up in a separate motion.
Okay. So, approve all other fees except for the Lynx Annual Pass?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote on that. Peter?
Aye.
Marcus?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, so that's unanimous vote. Do you have a second motion?
I'm not in the majority, I appreciate it, but I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion that we increase the Lynx Course, or actually, I'd make a motion that we decrease the Lynx Course by 20%.
Of the existing fee?
Of the existing fee.
So, let's figure this out. The existing fee's 360. 20% of that is 36 times two, right?
72.
72 by $72. So, if you took 360 minus 72, what do you get?
288. 288.
288, is that what you got? So, Dan's, Dan's making a motion that we not only defer an increase on the Lynx Annual Pass, but we discount the current fee of 360 by 20% for a net of $288. That's his motion. Do I have anybody second that motion? I'll second it for purposes of discussion. I mean, again, I run the disadvantage of not being as familiar with the golf courses as people that do golf. It seems Dan's driving in the interest of trying to be as fair as he can to the Lynx Annual Passholders. It seems the Director's telling us logistically to try to fit them in with another group of... of pass holders. Can be very difficult if not unfeasible.
Right.
So I think Dan's trying to look for some kind of middle ground. And by the way, I'll hear you guys on Dan's proposal. What do you think? Our director and our golf member?
Well, I, again, like I said before, I think it's not, what's going to happen is not just the people from the links that are getting affected by this construction. The people that have full memberships, Twilight memberships, all utilize the links as well. So it's going to be a lot more people trying to get out when the courses have gotten busier and busier, so it's going to be very difficult to get people out as it is this upcoming season, and we're anticipating it because it's been so busy the last couple of years. Again, as far as dropping the rates, again, I just think it was a really good deal to start with, the amount of money that was being paid for it, so.
Doesn't that kind of go to the argument whether it was a good deal for the eight-ounce candy bar or the five-ounce candy bar?
Yeah, so you can tell which one I eat, but, but, long story short, it's basically, to me, it was just the fact that, it just seems that if we do all this work, revamp this golf course and bring it up to the condition that we're trying to get to, reducing rates on it just doesn't seem to me to be the right thing to do at this time. That's my opinion.
Okay.
I think I'd like to, you know, give everybody their wish and say that we accommodate, but it just happens, and I think I'd like to try to meet you guys in the middle and do 10% to see if that is amenable to everybody.
So 10 off the existing fee?
That's $36 off.
Thirty-six?
Yeah.
No, but 10%?
Yeah.
That would be three twenty-four.
Three twenty-four.
Thirty-six. Three twenty-four?
We, I just, this has nothing to do with that, it has to do with the links course. We understand that it's going to be closed, it's going to cause issues for everybody, but either which way, it was going to go down at one time, either in the beginning or after. So if we went the beginning of the season, it would have closed down in September, where everyone would have got a lot of golf in, and then we would have shut it down. So it's like this, we're doing it the opposite way. We're trying to do it in the non-peak busy time where the weather is not the best, we're getting the construction, so we're trying to limit the closure as much as possible. You know, it affects the whole operation, and we do not want to be down for, for that long a period. So we are absolutely doing our best to make sure we can get it open.
Dan, do you want to amend your motion to go down 10% or do you want to hold where you are?
No, and please understand, I very much appreciate the work of you and your committee. I'm just appreciating the fact that one particular group is disproportionately affected by this project than others, and I'm trying to accommodate that. So yes, I withdraw the motion for the 20% reduction and replace it with a motion to reduce the links fee by 10% for the year.
So it'll be three twenty-four?
Be three twenty-four.
Okay, to 324. Okay, I will second Dan's amended motion and will withdraw my second, and his initial motion. Let's push this to a vote, see if we can wrap it. Peter?
I'd like to make some comments first.
Sure.
I understand Frank's and the, and the equity, but I know, I know in past, there had been, there'd be, if we get heavy rains, the links course would be closed for a week plus, sometimes longer, because the places were so wet, couldn't be used, so. There has to be some kind of an accommodation, but we also need to make sure that there's sufficient funds coming in to maintain the golf course. And next year, if we're, if we're coming in, the increase would have to go to the, probably higher than what's recommended here for next year. I'm amenable to Frank's thing, and I'm also, the 10% gives equity, but I, I think it needs to, needs to stay at, you know, where it is at, at $360.
Dorcas?
I agree with Peter. I think that it's an amazing deal that they're getting now at $360. I mean, if you look at those three rounds of golf, basically, single play would almost get you up to that fee. So I feel more comfortable with keeping it at the $360.
Mark?
I have nothing to add, no. I'm, I'm fine with keeping it at that number.
Okay. Let's hear if we get a vote on this. We're, we're voting on the 10% reduction. Take a roll call. Peter?
No.
Dorcas?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
And I vote yes. So that vote fails by a three to two vote.
Want to make a motion?
I, motion to, to leave the links course for this year only at 360.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Dorcas?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Passes unanimously by holding that links course vote, excuse me, links charge at $360, although the fee increases have been approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item was a show cause hearing with the music room. Not real sure who's going, Mr. Kelly, how are you?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
I heard rumors as to who was going to be here, who wasn't going to be here, so I'm glad to see that you are here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We apparently, take a seat.
Oh, thank you.
We are apparently in a conflicted situation in terms of a date and some discovery items that you have, I wouldn't say conflicted, but let's say unresolved.
Yes, unresolved, I concur with Mr. Chair.
So we're on for tonight, just so the public knows, there were various allegations of violations of state and local requirements on entertainment and I think alcohol service, I'm not sure.
Yes.
I just looked at that material over the weekend, which I usually do, I try to look at it in close proximity to the hearing. It's the first time I even looked at those allegations. I saw your commentary, I saw in the reports various references to body cams and other documentary type things that you said you wished to have to prepare for the hearing, and therefore we're requesting a hearing. On the other hand, from the police, they need some time, obviously, to provide those materials. I think Chief Fleming was, was indicating that. We have Sergeant Hennessy with us tonight. Good evening, Sergeant.
Good evening, sir.
So we have a couple of dates, I think, that have been thrown out to you. Nothing to do with me, just to do with the overall town calendar, police schedules, things that are coming up on our radar screen, budget hearings, tommy's. And I think that they, the best date, the closest best date was April 2nd, I believe. I don't know if, Mr. Kelly, how, and again, I don't know, I'm going to go to the police next, how much time we would need to provide those requested materials and so that they have an ample opportunity to look at them in advance of the...
Any, any date in April would be sufficient.
Can you get all your witnesses?
They would get the...
How does it say, how does this April 2nd look? That looks like a pretty good date for the town.
It, it has its challenges, quite frankly, for me, given my current schedule. I'm on notice for oral argument in front of the State Supreme Court, and I don't know whether that's going to be the first or the third. So that'll be, as I'm sure you can understand, that'll consume my energies for at least the week before. Perhaps, if I may, would April 23rd be amenable or also open for the town and for the police department?
What was that alternate date that you?
April 23 is an alternate date.
You threw that out, April 23rd?
Yes.
I want to hear from Sergeant Hennessy. Either of those dates, does April 23rd work for you?
It's, it's perfectly fine, sir.
Okay. So is there anything else to talk about? No?
I'd, I'd like to thank the town administrator for his prompt communications late on a Friday afternoon regarding my written request for the continuance that I submitted, as well as the request for the reports. The citizens and the residents of Yarmouth should know that they are very well served by the town administrator, who was hot at work on a Friday afternoon responding to my requests and informing me of the process that we would have to go through to have this discussion today, so. He serves the town proud.
Yeah, you know, to be very honest with you, because I was waiting to hear from these guys, I haven't checked my schedule yet. I know I got a lot of litigation coming up in April. Hopefully, that's, that's open for me, but I had such a busy day, I went literally right from work to here, and I think I'm okay and I'll do everything I can to clear off for the 23rd. Second, I, I know I'm available on the second, but it seems that that's a problem for Attorney Kelly's schedule, so let's, we'll notify you well in advance if there's any issue. But, yes.
I, I think what, the most expedient method to do this is to open the public hearing and take a vote to continue.
Oh, I do too, yes.
Right, and then, and then so it's a time certain, and then if it, if it turns out that the 23rd doesn't work, you could either continue it again or reschedule it.
I'm going to do that right now. So this is the opening notice. Wait a minute, it's in here.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got it, I've got it on, oh.
Is this one page?
It's a whole, it's a whole form.
No, but the notice, is it just? They put the show cause and the liquor in one notice? Or did they put two notices? This one? So, so here I found, this is behind the consent, Bob, behind the consent agenda, I think. So this is it? Okay, thanks. Okay, here's the notice. Yarmouth Select Board, acting as a local licensing authority, has scheduled a show cause hearing to determine if the annual alcoholic pouring license and annual weekday slash Sunday entertainment licenses held by Alpha Entertainment Group LLC doing businesses the Music Room at 541 Route 28 West Yarmouth, Mass. Brian's support managers should be modified, suspended, or revoked under chapters, under Chapter 155, Section 2B, comma, 1.03G, comma, 1.05A, comma, 1.08A, comma, 1.06E, comma, and 1.04 of the Yarmouth Rules and Regulations. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 27, 2024, in the hearing room at Town Hall 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. Select Board meeting begins at 6:00 P.M. So just now that we have the meeting open, there's been a request by the Music Room to have this matter continued for purposes of obtaining discovery documents and also the sufficient time on, on the time of the police to, to Attorney Kelly. We've discussed alternative dates of April 4th or the 23rd. The 4th seems to be a difficult date for Attorney Kelly, and so we're going to continue this matter on motion to a new date of April 23rd at 6:00 P.M. If I may have that motion from one of my board members.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, we'll take a roll call vote on this. Peter?
Aye.
Dorcas?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that's voted unanimously. If there's any issues, we'll notify you as promptly as we can, but as it stands, this matter will go forward on the 23rd at 6:00 P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Okay, well, it's good. Next item is going to be an update of the police shooter training and mental health program, which was on the agenda previously and was taken off because of, one of our officers was injured during a detail and was in the hospital in Boston. And our chief thought it best for him to be there to support, check on the officer, and of course, everybody, I'm sure, in town government agreed with that, and so that is why the matter initially went off the list. So tonight, we will take that up. It's 7:45. Oh, good.
Thanks, Elliot.
I can't find it.
I can't find it.
Shooter? Yeah, I didn't have anything. I don't think I did either.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
Doing well, how you doing?
Excellent, and I appreciate the postponement from the last meeting. It was a...
Dan, before you begin, can you give us a little brief status on the officer's condition? How he's doing?
He's doing much better. He's in a rehab facility right now, hopefully to be released this week to go home, and he's got many months of rehabilitation ahead of him. He ended up with several fractures and some significant lower body injuries, but thankfully, they got him to Boston, and he got the proper treatment that he needed, and he's on the road to recovery.
Thank you. We extend our best wishes for his speedy recovery on his part and complete restoration to health.
We hope so. He's a fantastic individual, and we appreciate the support from the board and from the town administrator. I let him know immediately what had happened and passed on to, to his family that, that your thoughts were with him, and it was very much appreciated by his family.
Thank you, Chief.
So tonight, we're going to give an update of the active shooter training that we did. I'm going to start the presentation off, then I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Carcetti and Deputy Chief O'Malley, because they actually, they, they worked with the fire department to put the, put the training together. So just a quick update, you know, what is Rescue Task Force? And that was the, the proposal. For years, the police department had been training the officers in response to an active shooter hostile event. So we had that part down pat. What we were missing was the component of working with our partners on the fire department of, once we get into the building, how do we then immediately start treating the injured and get them out as quickly as possible? So through the process of responding to an active shooter hostile event, it's stopped the killing and then stopped the dying, and we need the fire department for that second component. So that's what this training was based on. So Rescue Task Force is a set of teams comprised of police and fire personnel deployed to provide immediate care and the removal of victims where there's... provide immediate care and the removal of victims where there's an active threat. And why is this important? Because it saves lives. The quicker we can get fire personnel into injured and put them in a safe area and then get them out, we know that's going to save lives. That was really the crux of what we wanted to do. This training has been around for quite a long time. We were just, we were a little bit behind the curve, but now with this training, we are very confident that, God forbid, there was ever an incident like that in our community, we, along with the fire department, would be able to respond properly. And it's not just the officers on the ground going in, and as the lieutenant and the deputy are going to explain, it's command and control, meaning the chiefs and the deputy chiefs getting together and making sure that they're on the same page with their response and incident command. It's dispatchers, how they handle the call when it comes in and what they do, and then the responding officers with the responding fire personnel. So, the first thing I'm going to show you, I'm going to have to get up for a second. This is a quick video that we did of the training. There's no sound to it. This just illustrates what the officers and the firefighters would do on arrival and through what happened in different parts of the training. So, the equipment you see Sergeant Colville putting on right there, every one of our cruisers has what's called level-up equipment. So, with the body armor that we wear on a regular basis is, would stop like a handgun round, the equipment that the sergeant was just putting on is rifle-rated, so if we're going into a hostile event, we would be able to put on extra equipments that the officers are going in are more protected.
Is that AK-47 kind of rifle that you're talking about? Automatic weapons?
It would stop, 762? It'll stop, it'll stop like our patrol rifles, I don't know if it would stop an AK-47 round, which is a little bit bigger, but it is more protection. So, the training consisted of our officers, and anytime we do this training, we go through a series of safety checks to make sure that there are no live weapons or ammunition introduced into the training environment. So, you're going to see the officers carrying rifles and carrying pistols through Lieutenant Carcetti and through Deputy Chief O'Malley. They set up protocols in place that nothing in there could have harmed anybody. So, this is just a picture of what it looks like when officers are making an approach. They would take their long guns out of the cruisers, that is an offensive weapon, that's what they would take with them, all of our cruisers have long guns.
What's the caliber on the long guns?
A 5.56. This picture just illustrates the police and fire doing a briefing, so before any of the scenarios kicked off, they got together and they did a briefing, so everybody was on the same page. This picture demonstrates fire personnel showing how to secure a patient before evacuation, and again, police and fire learn that technique, because we would be working hand-in-hand. This picture just illustrates the fire department doing their briefing, and now I will turn it over to Deputy Chief O'Malley, who's going to talk about the actual command and control portion of the training.
Thank you, Chief.
So, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we did was to address our supervisors, because we know through lessons learned through different scenarios that have happened in our country, that command and control, unified command, is one of the vital pieces that need to take place in order for a successful conclusion from law enforcement and fire department personnel. So, what we did is we arranged for a four-hour training block, which we did twice. All the YPD sergeants and above, so sergeants, lieutenants, myself and the chief, were in the training, along with the fire department supervisors, their lieutenants and captains, fire chief and deputy chief. The objectives of the training were to review the priorities of an actual event. Because, you know, the fire department is trained on their own, and we have trained on our own, it was time for us to come together to be able to identify and address the priorities of both agencies, to understand that if this happened in our community, that it's not a law enforcement-only event, and it's not a fire department event, it's a public safety event, and we need to work hand-in-hand to accomplish those goals. We needed to develop a better understanding of what that actually meant. How do we transition from priority number one of stopping the killing to priority number two of stop the dying and priority three of evacuating the critically injured? So, bringing the command staff together or the supervisors that are going to be responsible for directing and coordinating response was vital to start this process and then being able to push it out later to the rest of the departments. We want to understand the complexities and responsibilities of command and control. We have been able to, through the course of time, doing things, you know, missing person, you know, searches, doing large-scale events, like the parade actually helps us tremendously to get each other together in the same group, to make decisions and to know what each other's doing. But we need to work on that continually and create relationships and be able to communicate. We also want to make all of our people and the fire department people understand that they might be responsible for establishing command. It could be a sergeant, it could be a patrol officer that happens to be in that position to start unified command. For instance, if an active shooter event happened in our community, and the sergeant was on the road, and he was one of the initial people to go inside the building, well, it might be one of the patrolmen that came afterwards that had to start unified command and be able to start setting things like staging and perimeter and calling for additional resources. So, that was part of this whole process, that we wanted to educate, but also become aware of what the responsibilities actually are. We also...
Was the reason for that, what you just said, Deputy Chiefs, that there's no delay in the process, waiting for perhaps a higher-ranked officer to arrive?
A hundred percent, and that's part of the lessons learned throughout different...
That's a good point.
All Day, Aurora, Colorado Theater Shooting, there's different events that have kind of, we've learned from in law enforcement, be able to advance, and hopefully never make those mistakes again and be able to accomplish the goals.
Thank you.
So, that's what we did as well, we reviewed some of the lessons learned. The Aurora, Colorado Theater Shooting was one of the primary ones that we used the after-action for, to, you know, address things that maybe could have been done differently or better, and to be able to learn from them, and a lot of that was command and control issues. Then, at the end of the, after we did the PowerPoint and we had discussion, what we did is we separated the room into two groups, fire, police, coming together. So, we put half of the fire and half of the police together on one side, and the same thing on the other to create two groups, and we did a tabletop exercise. So, I had an event, a fictional event of an active shooter event in our community, and kind of walked through the timeline, what would we do next, what are the priorities here, how are we going to identify staging, how are we going to identify perimeter responsibilities and whatnot? So, we worked through that, it created a lot of dialogue, a lot of good learning points came up, even just some simple things like terminology, you know, the police and the fire working together to solve problems in a real or a fictional scenario. It helps us to be able to move and communicate if the event ever did happen in our community. So, that was the, that was the four-hour command and control training block that we did successfully, we got a lot of good feedback from that, and then allowed us to move on to the actual training of the entire departments, which Brian can talk about, Lieutenant Carcetti, I'm sorry.
Good evening, folks, Brian Carcetti. Just want to say thank you again for all the support you give our department, especially for something like this. This is something I'm very passionate about, I've been teaching at the academy, and we've done, Chief said, a good job with our officers for their initial response, but what we're lacking is the unified response, the working with our fire counterparts, and it only is possible with the support from you, so thank you for that. What we put together is a two-day training for all sworn officers and fire personnel. It took place at the Matickees Middle School, which was an awesome venue. We were trying to get into the high schools, it's just logistically, it wasn't possible for coordinating people on school vacation breaks, whether they have childcare issues or the holidays when they're traveling, but this offered exactly what we needed for a large venue, the hallways, the doors set up just like any other school, and we had the big auditorium to do our PowerPoint lectures, everything was contained within that one venue, which was perfect for us. The first day, what we did is we started kind of from the ground up, because we have a varying degree of experience, and even some of the more experienced officers are lacking some of this training, because it has been progressive through the academies, and if they graduated years ago, they might not have had the same information or as much of the material. So, what we did is we introduced the current academy PowerPoint that's all, that's taught to all new recruits, to every single officer, as well as the fire department, so they understand what our role is on scene, they have a better understanding of what's been done before they're introduced to it. Our role is to stop the killing primarily, that's a law enforcement-only response. Once we get to stopping the dying and casualty evacuation, that's when we really work together, and I think overall, it really was a successful two days of training from us working together. We started with the PowerPoint, then went into just our equipment familiarization, like the chief talked about, we have rifle-rated vests, we have helmets, we have long guns, we have breaching equipment, all in our cruisers, so it was a little re-familiarization with that, and then the fireside, they have the ballistic protection too, so to learn how to put that gear on, and learning how long it takes, the prioritization of getting into the crisis site versus getting the extra equipment, and, you know, when people were put to the test, they're getting everything they need with, you know, time to spare less than a minute, so that makes it much more effective and safe in their response going in. Then we went to just the basic formations of arrival, getting up to the structure, getting up to the crisis site, and then we did some medical refreshers for basic hemorrhage control, airway management, some of the things that we're expected to be able to handle as police officers, and the fire did a great job providing assistance and guidance with that, and then we did some lifting carries, if we have a downed officer or downed victim, how can we get them out safely without injuring ourselves and/or injuring them further? So, the fire was instrumental with that as well, so really was a good starting point of day one, to get everything kind of on the same page of the unified response. Day two, we hit the ground running, we did stations in the morning, we did our formations for the rescue task force, that's police and fire combined, bringing them into the crisis site under our, called force protection, so they're not exposing themselves to any unnecessary danger areas, getting them right to the victims, and we're kind of working through different stages of that. There's casualty collection and AMs exchange points, that's consolidating all the injuries into an easier-to-control area for security purposes and easier to access to the AMs exchange point, so when we did that, we would just bring patients to an area, lifting carries, and then we bring them out to the extraction point for the ambulances. We also, and this is all police and fire together for every one of these stations, Deputy Chief O'Malley expanded on what we provided with our supervisors, we said it's very important that even the brand-new patrol officer understands their role as incident commander, if they're arriving at that timely manner to kind of coordinate all the other resources coming in to deal with this major incident. And the only time we separated was one of the stations where we focused on our individual officer tactics to go in and engage suspects, that's stopping the dying, law enforcement only, while the fire did a little more advanced medical care that, you know, we're not able to do as first responders, so that was the only time we separated one of the stations, everything else was seamless together. And then, once we finished all that, we went right into a couple of different scenarios for the afternoon, putting it all together. We had, be as realistic as possible with a little bit of compressed timeline, so we had the initial officer, officers responding, it's a single officer or a team of two, like it would be in a real situation, and then more officers arrived. Once they neutralized the suspect and the killing was stopped, we introduced Rescue Task Force, we had staging areas set, we had command and control outside, we eventually formed up into unified command, that's police and fire working hip-to-hip, so the communication is seamless, putting out to their people, to our people, and then we worked through that scenario, and then we changed some roles and did it again, and then one more time. So, overall, I think the progression from kind of crawl, walk, run to the end where we had large scarrils, and you could see the chaos, but it was controlled chaos. If you look at any of these incidents across the country, the number one is communication, command, and control, and that's really why we focus a lot of our energy and course material on that, and it only works if we're working directly with our fire counterparts, because that seems to be a major separation because of the lack of training. I think overall, it was a large success due to the support, starting from you and officers and firefighters, putting a significant effort throughout those two full days. That's how we did it with the officers. We also included a dispatch component, because even though not in the field, they are an integral part to making this work, they're the ones getting the first calls, they're the ones getting the pertinent information, and it's certainly overwhelming as a call-taker to go from business-as-usual to hysterical 91 caller, shots fired, or a child calling that's scared and hiding in a school, so we worked through the sequence of how to manage their emotions, how to prioritize getting pertinent information, what we call actionable intelligence, so they can provide that to the first responding officer, so they can have a better prioritization of locating that threat. We want to have the current location, the description, what they're on with, kind of some basic things that really are going to help how they can gain entry, with the best avenue of approaches, and the dispatchers did a really good job with this, and then how to give guidance to these callers to help save their lives. Officers' responses average about three to five minutes, so what they're really focusing on is to kind of make themselves as safe as possible through a sequence of avoiding, denying, and then defending if need be, to buy themselves those precious minutes until law enforcement can arrive on scene and locate them or the suspect, to keep them safe throughout this duration. We worked through all those sequences, we talked about best practices from previous incidents, lessons learned, we played a lot of audio clips from the callers, from the communication from police and fire dispatchers to their units in the field, and then we kind of critique what went well, what we would have done differently, and then areas to improve on, and again, they picked up and did a really good job with this, and then we kind of just brought it all together for a couple of different tabletop scenarios, kind of similar with the deputy chief did with our supervisors, and then they got involved kind of handling the calls and how to prioritize and deal with it, as well as learning, familiarizing them with our response as well, so everything working together in that unified command, the incident command structure, they're a big part of it, and we have some additional training that we're looking to provide them with some online coursework as well from reputable agencies across the country. So, we're still moving forward with it, and I think we're in far better shape than we were before October, and we'll continue to push this forward.
Lieutenant McMahon from the fire department was our partner from DFD, he worked hand-in-hand with Lieutenant Carcetti and myself to provide the training from both angles. One of the things that he was able to do also is create a survey, so all the officers and the firefighters took a very basic survey about what they liked, what they didn't like, and the feedback, for the most part, was very, very well-received by both agencies, overwhelmingly, actually. The one thing that came out to consensus was that they felt that the most beneficial part was exactly what we set out to do, is to work together, to communicate with each other, to be able to understand what each other's roles and responsibilities are, and really where we could help each other out to really work as a team to accomplish the goals during an event like this, if it should ever happen in our community. They also, the overwhelming majority also said that, you know, that we need more of it, we need to be able to work together, these are perishable skills, like a lot of the things that we do, you train once, and then you got to keep on doing it in order to stay not only fresh in what you've already learned, but also contemporary in what is, you know, the difference, the different scenarios and the different incidents that have occurred and what we can continue to learn from them. So, that's really, you know, where we got to, where the feedback came from.
That would be, I mean, the first question is, when would you do it again? I mean, like, how, this is something that it's not a one-and-done.
Glad you asked. So, next steps for us, and I just read it, I excuse the typo, I did a copy and paste error, so you see police and fire there twice, but it's very important for us to maintain our level of proficiency, and as the deputy chief and lieutenant have said, these are perishable skills, so training is paramount, we need to keep up with our training. So, we're going to submit a proposal moving forward, ideally, it would be every two years, we'd be able to get funding so that we could continue to do training and continue to develop the skills and continue to keep our officers as sharp as possible, working with our partners at the fire department. Having Matickees in our backyard that we can use for the foreseeable future is a huge benefit to us, the Gannon Training Center is also a benefit to us, and we need to just start leveraging those places and put officers and firefighters together so we can continue this training. This is not something that can stop, because unfortunately, if you look at the news, there are active shooter hostile events that happen on a weekly basis in our country, and we need to be prepared, because we are the first responders, our officers are going to be the ones that are going to go in, and through the work of the lieutenant and the deputy, our officers are trained now, single officer response. You get there, you're the first one going in the door, you're going to deal with the problem until everybody else shows up. So, we need to do what we can to keep our officers as safe as possible, and the way to do that is through training and through repetition, so it becomes almost second nature. They can don their equipment quickly, they can get their other gear out as quickly as they can, they can go in the building, and they can clear it as safely as possible. There was just a shooting in a church, it was yesterday, and the body camera footage is out on that already. These things do not stop, so we need to stay ahead of it as best we possibly can, because no one ever expects to wake up in the morning and plan for an active shooter hostile event in their community. We don't know when it's going to happen, but we can say that it's not a matter of, you know, of if, but probably when, and, you know, we just have to be, we have to be prepared. And again, I echo the sentiments of the deputy chief and lieutenant, we appreciate all the support from the town administrator, then the board, the assistant town administrator to get this done. The fire chief and Lieutenant McMahon were going to be with us, but they're at a conference right now, they would have been with us two weeks ago, and I know that I can speak with them, that their staff feels the exact same way. This was phenomenal. I can speak with them, that their staff feels the exact same way. This was phenomenal training. It brought us together to do something we've never been able to do. And it really showed how the two groups can work together. And now we just need to continue to build on it, because their skill set needs to be kept as sharp as ours when you're going into a situation like this. And it doesn't have to be in a school. It could be in an office building. It could be in a doctor's office. It could be in a restaurant. It can be in an open-air environment. And this is why we train the way that we train, so that, again, God forbid, something like that.
A concert, sporting event.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, our tactics are designed to work around the environment. They're not pigeonholed into one thing. We don't teach somebody how to do something, and then it only works in that environment. They learn to adjust. They have to be able to critically think. They have to be able to problem solve all this on the move while they're working together as a team. And that's why this training was so critically important. So we appreciate your time. We appreciate asking us to come in and give you an update, because we know that this was an expense to the community. It wasn't cheap, but we were able to, you know, we were fiscally responsible. We squeezed the lemon as much as we possibly could to get every last drop out of it. And it was fantastic. And the deputy said it, the survey, I was very proud to read that survey and to hear the nice comments that the instructors were top-notch. The training was top-notch. And the one thing that was overwhelming was we need to do this more. And we couldn't agree, couldn't agree more with that.
Can you give me just a general idea? You said something, the instructors, could you, like, who were the instructors? Where did they come from? What kind of experience or training did they have in this field? I'm just curious.
So we're fortunate enough to have a close-knit Cape Cod community. We have, you know, a lot of help from other agencies who have some varying degrees of experience. I would like to say, for our department, we probably have some of the most certified, qualified instructors in this particular field. We have at least half a dozen that teach regularly up in the academy in this exact subject. There's a significant process to become an academy instructor, and it's becoming even more regimented these days. So for our department to have as many as we do, not only does it help us on a daily basis, but when it comes to training our officers for field training, for training we do in the Gannon Center regularly, and then certainly something like this scale. So it was nice to have a large.
I assume these instructors are kept up on what's going on in the national scene? The do's, the don'ts, the effective measures, the ineffective measures?
Stay relevant.
You probably have the benefit of all of that, right?
This does change regularly. It's not just a perishable skill, but it's a fluid thing, where if you looked at 10 years ago, the response is different than it is.
That's great. Are you open to some questions and comments?
Absolutely.
I'm going to go to Mark Frost. I know Mark was initially, this was a big issue to him. And in fact, I think he sat down and met with you initially, chief, about getting this kind of training. So, Mark, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank our Yarmouth Police Department for the presentation tonight. This was, this was quite enjoyable. And I think there's also a special thanks to the Yarmouth voters and the people at town meeting that overwhelmingly supported the funding for this initiative. Your recollection is correct, Mr. Chairman. I was very, a very strong supporter of this initiative, and I'm very, very pleased by what I hear in the presentation tonight. You know, it's unfortunate that we have to do this kind of training, but I think there's sort of, within the DNA of the police department, there's this sort of commitment to training and a commitment to excellence. And it doesn't surprise me that this came off as well as it did. And I'm also pleased with getting some recommendations in terms of how we sustain this. I think the thing that I've learned over the years and the work that I've done, you know, in Congress and working for a congressman is, in my years in dealing with Coast Guard training, you know, when I was with Congressman Studs, we spent a lot of time visiting with small boat stations. And those stations that excelled, that had the highest marks, were the ones that trained on a regular basis and under the most difficult of conditions. And so, it was, training was just an ongoing part of regular activity. It was integrated into the routine of serving in the Coast Guard. And I hope we can get to the point where we can, as a community, can provide support for our police department, so that they can continue to sustain the training that they would like, that they need, that is needed for them, so that they can continue to excel in the work that they do. And I think we have to have that conversation about how do we institutionalize this? How do we bake this into the operations of the departments? And I'm glad it worked out with the fire department, and I'm glad that both departments see the value in this. And the reason why we have to keep it going and find ways to institutionalize it is that our departments are changing. There are new people coming and going all the time. And for this to work and for this to be effective, it's just something that we have to sustain now. So, you know, once again, thanks for the presentation. And I'm looking forward to our next set of discussions, where we can talk about how we keep this going and going forward. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Go to Dan.
I agree. It was powerful, sobering, when you start seeing this stuff play out. It was a great presentation. I'm just curious, we have an ongoing issue in town with dispatch. Did you find that a two-tiered dispatch had any effect on your ability to effectively attack these issues? And would a one-tier dispatch improve it?
Difficult to say. I'd have to, you know, learn more about it. But what we did is we cross-trained as much as we could with the information we had, because if our dispatch is a 911 primary, we're going to get overwhelmed with calls initially. If you look at these incidents, just to compare it to the Aurora, Colorado, they average about 1,500 calls a day, and they went to 6,000 on the day of the movie theater shooting. Lewiston, Maine, for their actor shooter, it was about 50 calls in 15 minutes. So it's definitely going to be overwhelming. So a lot of those calls are going to get transferred. And if it's somebody saying, "I have, you know, gunshot wound," and they're going to transfer to the fire department, and then they might say, "Well, now I, you know, see the shooter." And they have that pertinent information. So they need to be trained on what questions to ask, what pertinent information to sort through, find that balance, and communicating that back and forth. So my goal was to train them both up to speed, whether they're police or fire, to learn how to handle these hysterical callers, get the information that we need to get to our units in the field, and then give good guidance to these callers to keep them safe for those critical minutes until fire and police and fire can arrive on scene to extend that.
You know, candidly, it didn't even occur to me. I mean, we're also focused on the first responders that are at the site. But, you know, you've really laid out how important it is for dispatch people to be able to handle this as well. And I'm thrilled that you did on a training with them. Grant funding, because of the prominence of this issue, is the state, are the feds, the NRA? Anybody offering grant funding at this point?
There's no, there's no grant funding. So there's grant funding for a group out of Texas Tech that is going out, and they're teaching the newer form of training that Lieutenant Carcady is trained in. We're going to see that coming out on the Cape. And we're actually going to use Matichees as one of the training facilities. But for the police department, the fire department themselves to get the money, I haven't seen anything like that. There's more maybe on the fireside with FEMA that I'll talk to Chief Arasqua about to see if we can get some money that way. But we certainly look. And back to your second part of your question, right now, our dispatchers are in two different buildings, four miles away from each other. There's no doubt in my mind that if we had fire and police dispatchers sitting in the same comm center, that certain things would work more smoothly, because you would literally be turning to the person next to you and talking to them, versus trying to hand something off on a phone. So a single, a single response center, in my opinion, would probably be a better approach. Because to lieutenant's point, 911 is going to get overwhelmed. I was working the day of the tornado, and we couldn't keep up with the 911 calls. Dennis is one of our, is one of our secondary PSAPs, and they started fielding our calls for us. So the 911 center would get overwhelmed. But if you have dedicated dispatchers, police and fire working next to each other in the same building, in the same room, I am sure that it would be a smoother operation than having separate, both professionals, police and Yarmouth police and fire, both highly trained, highly competent dispatchers in their own rights and their own buildings. But you put those two groups together, and I think it would be a tremendous recipe for success.
Yeah, I think it's plain on its face. We just have to get it done.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marcus.
You were thanking us, but I want to thank you, you know, for going ahead and putting together such an amazing program, getting the fire department and the police department together, because, God forbid, it ever happens in this town, but it could. And we need to be ready for it. And I will be very happy to support finding the financing to continue this kind of training, because you can't, it's not a one-and-done. There is no way that it can be. I mean, you have to, you have to stay perpetually training to be ready for hopefully that never, that day never coming, but in case it does, that you're ready for it. I hear you also on the dispatch and, you know, looking forward. There are a lot of things that, it's not just the fire department or just the police department any longer. It really is the community. And I think we are definitely going to have to look at that with dispatch and what we're going to do. I thank you. And I would love to hear if there's a way we could put together for cable TV some kind of program on this, you know, kind of to bring the folks in town up to date on what's going on, and certainly help to reassure, I think, some of the parents out there. I, as many people know, am a bus driver in town. And you may remember, well, I'm sure you remember, but the people watching may remember, that we had a potential threat that had been issued, I believe it was last year, it might have been the year before. And being on a bus and listening to those children who did come to school that day, because there were a number of children that did not, their parents opted not to send them to school that day, it's just heartbreaking to see what these kids are going through. And it's reassuring, I think, for them to know that we have our departments in town ready and able to handle whatever may come our way. So thank you, not thank us, but thank you for what you're doing. And the fire department, who isn't here with us today.
Thank you, Peter.
God bless you guys. God bless the fire department. Hope it never happens, but it could. And a scenario that, a scenario that I haven't seen happen yet, but I could see it happening, a domestic issue that starts with a fire and then a shooting, who would be in charge? The fire guy, because he's first there?
If you can handle that.
So if the, so obviously, we always train that situation dictates our tactic, and every situation is different. We are responsible for protection of the fire personnel in certain circumstances as well. You know, obviously, life-saving is paramount, but given the situation, I mean, that's a hypothetical that probably has happened in our world at some point. But the fire department has to make sure that they're going to be safe. They have the protective equipment now that they, that they can don to make sure that they're safe. We need to make sure that we provide the security for them to do their job. The fire department probably wouldn't be going in to take care of the fire at that point, if that's, if that's your question. The one thing that's come up quite regularly during all of this is the concept of teamwork. Very, for at least a large part of my career, our responsibilities have been siloed, right? So we take care of the threat. They take care of the medical issues. Well, we know that reality is that they're, they're not separate, that they go hand-in-hand. And a situation like that, we would need to work with teamwork. And that's how unified command and command and control kind of take over, to identify priorities, life-saving priorities, and then be able to solve a problem. Not everything, I mean, you could have a situation happen one day, and then a similar situation that happens the next day with a completely different set of circumstances and complete set of different outcomes. So that's why training is so important, and communication is so important. And that's really what this, this comes down to, is unified command and working together as a team.
Now, when this, when this first came up a year or so ago, I was thrilled that both the fire department and you guys were going to get together, because, A, you'd work on tactics, you would also get to know people as people, and their strengths and their weaknesses, and how they would go. And it sounds, it sounds like from the communication you got back from everybody, those things worked out very well. And so, again, God bless you guys, and thank you, thank for what you do for the community.
Thank you.
And find some funding elsewhere.
Start with chief and deputy chief and sergeant. I incorporate all of the glowing comments of my fellow board members. In addition, I have some of my own. This is, in my opinion, not a elective type of police exercise or public safety. It is critical. It's the modern world, unfortunately. I'll bet you that none of these communities that got stricken by these tragic events ever thought they would. And I'll bet you none of them ever planned for it. The world's changed. And this is, this is bizarre stuff. When I was a kid, could I even possibly envision someone walking into a school and shooting children? No reason at all. If you said that even possible, you'd probably get locked up. But that's not the reality today. The reality today is these things are happening. And the reality today is that our police and fire personnel have to respond to it. And I can't think of anything worse than not preparing for it. Walking into a totally chaotic situation, what is what? What do I do? Do I wait for my shift commander? Do I wait for the SWAT team? Do I call in, you know, how many, do I call in ambulances yet? Do I search first? It'd be crazy if you put somebody in a situation like that. So I consider this as basically a requirement that we have to keep going with and fully support it. As Dirk has said, you know, the thanks goes to you guys. You guys are out there in the front line. There was an incident, and I don't want to get bogged down on it right now, but recently, as you're aware, with a car and fire, police officers responded. And the officers didn't know if there's anybody in there that was going to get consumed by the fire or not. So they had to try to break into the car and make that determination. A great personal risk. That car exploded or something like that. We could have had officers seriously injured or killed. That's the reality of police work today. Shouldn't be, but, but it is. And I'm sure my fellow board members would support me, but at some point in time, I'd like to have those officers come in and get recognized for what I consider to be acts of bravery in that incident. So another part of the training, I think, that's very important, is not just knowing what you're going to do, but know what the other guy's going to do, know what his responsibilities are, and kind of stay in your lane, so you can be as effective as you can be with your training qualifications and experience. And the same for that other person, perhaps, in the fire department. I think that advanced understanding is really critical, that people aren't stumbling over people. People aren't getting involved in areas of responsibility that are really going to slow down the operation and make it less effective or less expeditious. But I'm sure there's a lot of complexities with something like this, because as Deputy Chief O'Malley pointed out, every situation's different. And one of the things I noted in terms of the skill set that's, you guys are trying to impart to everybody involved, is critical thinking. And critical thinking, you know, by definition implies that there's a lot of different scenarios that have to be addressed in a lot of different ways. So I thank you so much for putting on the program. I think two years is a very reasonable redo, if you will. Certainly, I don't think it should go any further than that. And no matter what happens, if and when it does happen in our community, we can at least know that we prepared as best we could to save lives. And that's what it's all about, right? Protecting our citizens. So as Dirk has said, the thanks goes not from you said, the thanks goes not from you to here, but in reverse direction, we're, we're very grateful for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, we consider this team, because we couldn't do it without the support of you, the town administrator, the assistant town administrator, and the community that came out and said, yes, we think this is important. And they, and they voted for the funding because we know that things are tight and it's not easy to, to get funding for, for programs. But this is something that you could, if you were able to see it and see the officers and the firefighters working together, the, the passion that they have, you know, once we get there and we, we start training, we all love it. I started teaching active shooter back in 2000. I was one of the original instructors on the Cape back in 2000, when we trained every police officer the same way back then. And to see the evolution to the training now and to turn it over to the deputy chief and now, now to lieutenant who handles it, we want to do a good job. We enjoy training. We enjoy, you know, learning new things and being able to work side by side with our brothers and sisters at the fire department is critical. Because the deputy said it, this is not a police response anymore. This is a joint response. We have to work together. We will be working together at some point to figure out the problem. We go in and, and we take care of the, we take care of the, the suspect. But then after that, we have to be prepared to take care of the victims. And that's why this training is so, so critically important. So again, we, we appreciate your support, and we're looking forward to putting another presentation together and coming back before you. So we can tell you where we want to take this, the next step that we want to take this. So thank you.
Great. We look forward to that. And thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Conservation Commission presentation update, wetland bylaw is next. An eight o'clock item, and guess what? It's pretty much on schedule.
You wanted me to talk about mental health. I don't want to, I don't want to skip over that, but it was going to be active shooter and then the mental health group.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can cover that.
I'm sorry. Can we come back? I, I, my mistake. Can you give us the mental health portion?
Yes, very quickly, yes. So-
We're going to hold on con, con for just a few minutes.
Our mental health team remains extremely busy. So you know that it's, Justine is our full-time clinician, and Patrick is our part-time clinician. So some call information, between 22 and 23, co-response went up 166 calls. Outreach and follow-up between 22 and 23 went up 226. And then clinician interaction, which is the clinicians get phone calls after hours, emails, and then they follow up with, with individuals and families between 22 and 23. That went up 392. So between the two years overall, the amount of calls for service for the clinicians, again, that's co-response, outreach and follow-up, and then the clinician interaction went up 784 calls. So they are extremely busy. Their major roles are assisting families with mental health referrals, conducting frequent follow-ups with individuals in need of services, connecting individuals to local providers, that could be Duffy Health Center or something else, information sharing at regional meetings. Justine goes to the regional meetings and, and brings information, then brings it back to us. And then their, the critical piece is they provide training to our officers on how to handle different calls. So they are extremely busy. And as you know, that the, both positions are grant funded, and the deputy chief started the program, has now turned it over to Lieutenant Bogdan, who now works with the deputy chief on managing the grant. And last year, we got 180,000, $180,000 to run the program, which pays for the two clinicians, overtime for officers to go out, because anytime a clinician goes out, they are with an officer. We will not send a clinician out by themselves. And then additional training for our clinicians to go to as well.
Clinician always has an officer accompany them?
Always. Yes, always. And then the second component is our domestic violence and special victims unit. That has two full-time staff, Annie Catalano and Shelby Ray. They work directly with Detective Zantini, involving sexual assault cases, domestic abuse and human trafficking. With adult sexual assaults, they will assist as needed. They'll connect them through the court process, connect them to services, attend meetings, and maintain contact through the life of a case, which could be several years. These cases generally don't go very quickly. So it's important that not only does Detective Zantini, who is our main sexual assault and abuse investigator, stay in touch with the victims and the families, so do our, our civilian advocates, because we need the, the victims and the families to know that they're supported, to feel safe so that they can go through, through the, through this trial stage, if that's where it goes. They assist child cases. If we have a child sexual assault, they will go to Children's Cove and participate with the, the same interview. And then they will, again, help the family of the child through, through the court process. And then most recently, we had a very significant case. It was in, it was a child abuse case. It was a horrific case. And it was almost a, it was a monumental outcome in, in the trial court where both a mother and a father were found guilty. And the mother was found guilty. She never abused the children, but she didn't do anything to stop the abuse. So the, the father was, was committed to, I think, nine or 10 years in prison. And, and then the mother received a pretty substantial sentence as well. Our two advocates, and this was, this case went on for years. It wasn't a couple of years. It was more like six or seven years the case went on for. And our advocates stayed in touch with the family through the entire time. Meetings, hearings, whatever, whatever it took to get, to get to the finish line and then supported the family through. And it's, happy to say that, that the children are actually doing very well. Being brought up in such a horrific family situation, they are doing, they're doing very, very well. And I would like to think that that is, in part, the work that our advocates did along with Detective Zantini, making sure that they've never forgotten, they always had the support that they needed from the first time that the initial complaint came to, came through, rather, excuse me, until sentencing. And they were with them the entire time. So we can't understate the importance of our clinicians and then our civilian domestic violence advocates. They do unbelievable work for the police department as well as the community. Because our officers don't have the time to follow up with victims and with the families like our advocates do. And we are also intimidating. We wear uniforms. It's much easier for someone to, you know, to talk to, to talk to an advocate. So the work that they do is, is tremendous. The advocates, both Annie and Shelby, their positions are also grant funded. Annie's position is a little more stable. Her grant goes out to 2027, for if they apply again. Unfortunately, with Shelby's position right now, we're struggling with the state, the Commonwealth. We have not received notification that they're going to, they're going to refund that position, but we're pushing to try and get the information to see if that's going to happen. But they, everybody does fantastic work. And then just some stats on that group. In 2023, they handled 69 cases. And those cases ranged from rape to indecent assault and battery on children over 14, children under 14, and then a human trafficking case. And out of those 69 cases, 40 resulted in suspects being charged. And the, the other 29, it was, you know, the victim was unable to, unable to move forward, or they couldn't, they didn't have enough information at that time to go forward with charges. But the vast majority of the cases did end up with someone being charged. And then, then, that, that goes to the work that our advocates and Detective Zantini does.
Chief, you were saying that the mental health is grant funded.
Correct.
And how far does that one go out?
That's an annual grant. The deputy can speak more to the grant. He wrote it in the beginning.
When they award, excuse me, when they award, they, they do it on an annual basis. It's, it's, right now, we've been told that we get preference because our clinician positions are attached to that, that funding. We've been assured through our DMH contacts that funding is available currently, and it's continuing to increase. We've had the grant funding, I believe, since 2015. So we continue to, to receive it, and not only receive it, but we've continued to increase it. It was originally $60,000. And like the, the chief said, the last one was $180,000. It is the way that contemporary policing is going. Whether you're talking about mental health clinicians, you know, co-response, civilian advocates, that's where, that's where policing is going, to not only be able to deal with issues as law enforcement, but also to introduce resources that can deal with things outside of the criminal justice system. And that's really where our focus is, to be able to bring in resources that aren't necessarily a law enforcement or criminal justice issue. So that's really where it's going. It's being funded through the state. It's, it's become a priority for, for most politicians, for most social service agencies. So we don't see the grant funding going anywhere in the near future. Should probably knock on some wood while I'm at it. But yeah, that, that's really the, the crux of it. It, it does come out a year, and it's a reapplication that we have to do on a yearly basis that Lieutenant Bogdan has taken over doing.
So you're a year ahead? Like, do you know what's going to happen next year, or you only know this fiscal year up to July 1st?
DMH has told us that we would be advised if there were some issues, but there, there have been no issues. Couple of years ago, I actually got a, a call towards the end of the year saying, hey, do you need some additional funding? So that, that's always a good sign that, that that's something that, that DMH and, and the state is, is looking to prioritize.
Just for the sake of folks watching, DMH would be the Department of Mental Health?
Yes, sorry.
No, that's okay. We all get into that alphabet time. But it is so true that there are so many things that are placed on the shoulders of the police department that would be much better taken, handled by people that are experts in that type of field. So being able to work hand in hand, I'm sure has made a tremendous difference and will continue to with the department. Thank you.
Peter.
So Deputy Chief O'Malley, so you, you could see these clinicians become police officers at some point. Not necessarily carrying a gun, but, but a clinician as a full-time employee of, of the police department?
Yes. That, so right now, Justine is the, our full-time clinician. So she is employed by us. The town has provided her with her benefits. She works for us. Patrick is our part-time clinician embedded, and he's, he's been here from the start. I see, just my personal belief, and I, I know that other officers and, you know, I'm not, I'm not alone in this opinion, but I see that off, of police departments across the country are going to have clinicians embedded in their police departments across the nation. It is such a benefit to our community, to the people that are living with mental illness, and it's such a benefit to our officers to be able to have that resource, to be able to introduce it, and be able to step back. The clinicians have a different skill set. They have a different view of things, and they have the backing that our officers, quite frankly, just don't have. You know, our officers can deal with the immediate things. We are very good at talking to people. We, we have a lot of good, good skills, but the clinician just amplifies that tremendously. And they introduce resources and they have the time to follow up. So there's just such a benefit to it. I, I don't see it ever going in the other direction. It's only going to increase.
And, and with, with you, meaning an officer, with the clinician, that gives good support and protection for both the clinician and, and the, and the patient?
So our, our officers are there to provide safety and security. So there have been situations where it might be a mental health crisis going on, but it's too dangerous to, to introduce a clinician. So that's why our officers also have additional training, de-escalation, CIT training. It doesn't quite meet the same standard as maybe the, the clinician does, but they have advanced training and they have guidance from our clinicians that provide additional resources to our officers in those cases.
CIT?
Crisis Intervention Trainings.
Thank you.
I'm really good with my, my acronyms.
Right. I, I work in a different industry, and we use CIT for something else.
Yeah. No, I agree. It, it's an evolutionary process, policing. And we knew when we got the, the additional resources that they would be helping you to go into situations where people were in crisis. We knew that. And also training your police officers. I think what I was most struck by most recently was to see the other side, to see the supports of the victims who can be traumatized again by the court process. And as you said, it takes years sometimes. And so many of those cases weren't being prosecuted because of those services weren't available. And perpetrators weren't being held accountable. And so this is really just full circle in terms of bringing a whole range of services, protection, but also understanding and mental health treatment to perpetrators, to victims, and giving our policemen and policewomen the types of resources and understanding and training that they need. So it's just, it's a marvel to watch how it's changing and how adaptable your department is being.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, any comments?
I'd just like to echo the comments of my colleagues on the board. One of the reasons why I wanted this discussed tonight is because just, it's such an eye-opener to see the kind of demands that are being made on our police department these days and, and how they're changing, and how important it is to provide, you know, resources to, to deal with all this. I think one of the questions that I have, you know, for the deputy chief is, you know, how does having this additional personnel, how has it improved policing in other areas? Does it, does it make it more efficient? Does it free up time from other police officers? What, what kind, what's the impact been of having this personnel available?
Well, it not only-
Both the chief and the deputy chief.
I, I think it not only frees up officers to handle other things, but it provides a resource that we weren't necessarily providing before. So the, the clinician, before we had a clinician, we would deal with the situation in the moment, in the time. And a lot of times, and what prompted the creation of this program was the next shift, the next day, would be going back and trying to deal with the same problem time after time. So it did take up a lot of resources. And at some points, our officers became immune to what was going on at this situation, because, oh, it's, it's this situation again. Oh, it's this problem again. It's this person again. And we weren't being, we were, we being tied up with additional calls for service, and we weren't being effective in our response. Now, with the addition of the clinician, it has decreased those repeated responses, and it's also been able to provide a solution, or at least a resource to help with a solution to a common problem. So it, it has helped us as a department, it's helped us as a community, and it does help individual officers be able to move on to the next call or be able to not go to that repeated call time after time after time after time. And when you're dealing with people with mental illness and sometimes in crisis, a common response or a normal response can be dangerous for our officers, because they're unpredictable. They, it, those types of calls can be volatile at times. And when an officer drops their, their awareness, because they've been there so many times, it can become dangerous. So it has helped us on so many different levels. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that we also have two very high, high, high-quality clinicians, that I don't think that our program would be as successful without Patrick and Justine, because they're both excellent at what they do. They both understand what it's like to work with officers, and that isn't always the case. So we are very fortunate that we have two great employees that, that are, are clinicians that help make this program possible.
Yeah, if I can just follow up, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think there's also, you know, when you look at it from the other side, when, you know, from, from the, the resident side or the constituent side, I think it's incredibly helpful to sort of, at the end of an engagement or an interaction with the police department, to at least, you get, you're, you're getting, you're getting maybe better attention, maybe you're getting a little bit further along. I mean, so many problems that people are wrestling with are go outside the purview of law enforcement or police. But it's because the police show up, they're always there, and they're always respond, that, that's one of the reasons why, you know, you get the calls. So to be able to have this additional staff and have these additional resources really provides a much higher quality of engagement with residents in the community or others in the community. And I think there's also some satisfaction that comes from that, because clearly, you want to be able to respond, and you want to be able to respond with a high-quality interaction. And I think by having access to these services, it works for everybody. It works for the, for the police department, and it provides that kind of efficiency. But it also, I, I think the reaction in the community is also very positive as well. So I think this, this, this is a big plus. It's sort of a win-win-win situation across the board. The real challenge for us is going to be like, like, like on so many cases, is, you know, it's great to get the grant funding and get the outside support. My, my question is, is how long do you think we can continue this with grants and, and other funding?
I believe that, you know, I have to have a, a conversation with the, the town administrator and figure out what the cost would be to add them eventually to our budget, because we don't want to get into the situation where, and it happens, we find out at the last minute that the, the grant is not going to be funded or not fully funded, and then we're scrambling to try and keep them on. So that's something that I will take up with the town administrator and put an accurate price together on what it would cost to, to keep our staff. Because if we- Because if the grant isn't funded, we are going to lose a significant piece of our police department. They professionalize the Yarmouth Police Department. They bring skill sets, as a deputy said, to our department that our officers just don't have. As well as we can be trained to deal with things, our advocates are specialists in those areas, and they bring something that an average police officer cannot bring. Their services are invaluable to us and to the community. So thank you for that.
Yeah, just a final question, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think clearly there's been some exceptional support up on Beacon Hill for providing this kind of funding, in my hope. I know Chief Lennon is very active with chiefs. I think we've got to figure out a way to make sure that our legislators, particularly those in the Senate and the House, that have advocated for this funding and have been supportive of this funding, I think we've got to get the message to them as to how critical it is to continue this funding. That serves in everyone's interests because the more the state can continue to provide support for this, the more it benefits us all and helps us here in local government on the bottom line. But, you know, we should have some side discussions about how we can advocate and make sure the good stories that we're hearing are stories that are also can be heard up at the State House and on Beacon Hill, particularly among the legislative leaders that have been actively supportive of this kind of work. So something to be worked on later on, but I just wanted to get that out there. So once again, thank you. This was a great presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. In the interest of time, first of all, I apologize again for leaving out this important segment of the presentation when I called the agenda. It kind of stacks up with everything else we were talking about tonight, and that is interdepartmental cooperation, the complexities of dealing with situations in policing, both in terms of these major catastrophes and also day-to-day things that come up in the police department. One of the things that you said that made a lot of sense to me is that before you had the social worker component to the police department, you keep going to the same house probably over and over and over without any kind of long-term solution to what really essentially was a mental health problem. Whereas these mental health providers can carry over that incident on an ongoing basis, reach out for the appropriate services, get these people hopefully the help that they need. And that's not a one-shot deal that you deal with on a 24-hour shift by any stretch of the imagination. So in the old days, a poor officer would respond, you get a problem, you know, here's the complaint. Then they get, you know, next guy, a shift or two later, same problem, same house, same complaint. And there's no way to extend the evaluation, treatment, and hopefully remedy of that particular problem that you can do now that you have that kind of resource. So that's very, very important. But again, it's not like it was in the old days. This is very complex stuff, and it involves a lot of different coordination between fire, mental health, police, these training seminars of life shooter, allocation of responsibilities. You know, one of the things that you said, and again, I won't spend much time on this, but tracing back to the life shooter, you talked about neutralizing the threat, right? So that's what I think of, okay? There's a shooter in a building. He's killing people. The police got him. But that's only phase one. The human brain, I don't think beyond that, but as you pointed out to us tonight, now it's just people dying, and we got to address that. And then there's evaluations of people, maybe kind of like a triaging, if you will, who's going where first, which is another big component of the crisis. So it does involve a lot more than what's on the surface. And that's why I'm glad we're, first of all, integrating into our department the resources that we need, and secondly, planning for these potentially difficult situations. So again, I want to commend you and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize. I said I would be quick, but it took--
No, it was my fault. It was my fault.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's an important subject. Thank you.
Concom presentation updated wetland bylaw for real this time. Eight o'clock item.
Good evening.
Good evening, and welcome to our meeting. You are on for a update wetland bylaw review. I understand that you have a summary of changes that you want to address.
Yes. So I'm Brittany DiRienzo, Conservation Administrator. I'm joined with three of our board members, David Bernstein, Jack Frost, and our vice chair, Ellie Lawrence. And we also have Jay Tellerman with Town Council on Zoom as well because he contributed to this bylaw update and provided revisions and support throughout. So if you remember, we did come forward to you with a similar bylaw in the fall. This has been scaled back significantly from that. A lot of the concern you had with our original bylaw in the fall was with the coastal resiliency portion. Excuse me, and that has been removed completely from the bylaw update. We're really focusing on clarifying the language and updating this bylaw to reflect our current procedures and protocols and making it really clear for our public to understand, and adding a single resource area for protection, which is vernal pools. And we're leaving the coastal flood plain out of this addition of it. So we're here to talk about the bylaw update, and it was last amended in 1987. In those 30 years or so, the language has kind of gone out of date, and there's been many things that have changed since then that require updating this bylaw. We wish to add vernal pools as a protected resource area and provide consistency with other state and local regulations that are already enforced. It is much longer than our existing bylaw, mostly because we are copying several provisions from our existing regulations into the bylaw. Having a certain level of redundancy in those two documents can be really valuable for our applicants to have a clear understanding of our expectations and procedures as they go through the process of permitting. It went backwards. Sorry. So how we developed the new revised wetland bylaw is we examined our existing bylaw and regulations. We looked at our current protections of resource areas and where they may be lacking, areas that would provide, that would benefit from additional protections, our current practices that may not be outlined in our regulations or bylaw, significant public comment and staff comment from our meetings held this fall and over the winter, and of course, input from our town council lawyers. There is a model document created by the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions that is used widely throughout Massachusetts as a template for many towns for their local bylaw development. And we use this bylaw and modified it to reflect Yarmouth's specific needs. So a summary of our changes. So the Conservation Commission is tasked with implementing the State Wetlands Protection Act and its regulations in addition to our local bylaw and our regulations. And so the Wetlands Protection Act defines eight public interests and values that resource areas provide. And these are the basis of which the regulations implement performance standards to protect those interests. So we're seeking to recognize three additional interests and values that wetlands can provide. And these three values are rare species habitat, agriculture and aquaculture, and resilience to climate change. The rare species habitat coincides directly with our interest in protecting vernal pools. And certain rare species are currently protected when they already exist in wetland areas. But rare species that exist outside wetland areas and rare plants are not protected at all currently. So we're seeking to add protections for those. And we also just seek to recognize that wetland resource areas can provide the service of agriculture and aquaculture. And these have several exemptions currently in the wetlands regulations that will remain. And resilience to climate change. So since climate change can have such drastic negative impacts on both our built-in natural environments, we're seeking to recognize that these wetland resource areas can have the potential to provide mitigation and resilience to the future negative impacts of climate change and help us adapt to the future conditions in the town of Yarmouth, which can include sea level rise. So to get a little bit into our additional resource area that we would like to protect, vernal pools. Vernal pools are, they can, they're currently protected under the wetlands regulations only when they're certified by the Division of Fish and Wildlife and when they exist in a currently protected resource area. So vernal pools can exist and often exist outside of wetlands, and they're seasonal pools of water that provide important habitat for wildlife. And these pools that exist outside of wetlands are currently unprotected, and they have no performance standards or permitting required and can be easily damaged by development and other activities. They provide habitat for a number of species, including state-listed and federally listed species. And those sometimes are only protected currently if it's a wetland resource area. So we're seeking to provide protections for more of these important vernal pools. They also have been shown to have value outside of, so disproportionate to their small size, they can be very small and have significant value to the ecosystem. To identify a vernal pool, they would have to be investigated by a qualified professional and meet certain criteria at specific times of year. And often that's during the time between March and May, and sometimes can require nighttime evaluations. This material would have to be presented to the Conservation Commission and reviewed, and the commission can do its own site visits as necessary to approve that information. There's also a map on the Massachusetts GIS. It's a layer called potential vernal pools, and this can help investigate areas that have been shown by aerial imagery to have the potential to be a vernal pool. But these areas are not fully encompassing, and they're also not guaranteed to be a vernal pool. I've personally investigated 12 of those areas in Yarmouth, and only about half of them ended up being vernal pools. So this map can be a valuable tool, but is definitely not guaranteed. And there can be potential vernal pools that are not on that map. And the picture on the bottom shows a spotted salamander egg mass, and that's one of the important species that these pools provide habitat for. So why are vernal pools important? They're hotspots for life and biodiversity, and we need to keep our biodiversity intact in order to maintain the ecosystem services that we rely on from these wetland areas. There are also many species that require these pools to complete their life cycles and would not be able to survive without them. And so they can be keystone ecosystems, and their role is more important than their size. So this is a photo of a vernal pool in Yarmouth off of Dennis Pond in the spring and in the fall. So it's always going to be a depression, and it's always going to be lacking woody vegetation if it's shallow enough. So there are clues that you can use outside of the direct observation of the required species during springtime to help identify a vernal pool. Here is some of the indicator species. There's a specific list of species that can be used to verify the presence of a vernal pool. These are the most common in Yarmouth, the wood frog, the spotted salamander, and a fairy shrimp. There's also several others that are state-listed and include the blue-spotted salamander, the Jefferson, and the marbled salamander. So Yarmouth is currently one of only four of the 15 towns on Cape Cod that has no protections for vernal pools. So that means 11 of our other 15 towns have vernal pools in their wetland bylaws. So we're seeking to join those 15 in protecting vernal pools and recognize their important value. So I mentioned briefly earlier that the reason that our proposed bylaw is much longer than our current bylaw is all of these replications. We're adding many components of our current wetland regulations into the wetland bylaw for clarity and consistency. And this can help applicants, when they're preparing permits, to decide whether or not they may need a permit and submit successful applications with the knowledge of the commission's expectations. And so this includes the riverfront area. This is already enforceable under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Conservation Commission, but doesn't exist in our bylaw. And so we're adding it to make it abundantly clear to our applicants that although this is only in the state regs, it's also expected to be complied with when you submit locally. So that is the bulk of our summary of changes, and we'll take any questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to recognize that we have on our screen our town council, Jay Tellerman. Jay, good evening. Thank you for being available. Maybe the first question, just to kind of streamline this. I know with the prior version of the bylaw, there was concerns about increasing the jurisdiction of the Concom. And that, I think, was one of the catalysts that led to the revisions. Aside from the vernal pool language in the bylaw is not limited to the 100-foot wetland designation. It can extend beyond that, correct?
Yes. So the vernal pools can exist outside of a currently regulatable--
Okay. So that, in a way, could be considered a jurisdictional expansion under the wetland bylaw. First of all, Jay, do you agree with what I just said? Secondly, is there anything else in this proposed bylaw that you feel increases the jurisdiction of the committee?
Well, thanks, Mike. Certainly, the bylaws that already exist has some enhanced jurisdiction. And the reason why local bylaws do have some enhanced jurisdiction is that it gives you a little more local control. And for coastal towns or towns with a lot of wetlands, it's generally viewed as somewhat favorable to enhance some jurisdiction to either isolated wetlands or the buffer zone to wetlands, or both. Certainly, vernal pool jurisdiction enhancements have been a feature more recently in a lot of local wetland bylaws where the definitions really aren't that, altogether that different in this bylaw than I'm seeing through for a lot of my other communities. This is in kind of the broad swath of the way towns are protecting vernal pools. The state doesn't quite come up to the level of protection for vernal pools that a lot of environmentalists are seeking to gain in terms of the local protections. So, and it's not atypical for towns to protect them in the way that is shown up in this draft, certainly.
Okay. Do you think that there's this-- I mean, I think incorporating the provisions of CMR into the bylaw is probably a good thing. It's difficult for a lot of laymen, builders, developers to be reading a bylaw, and then it refers to 101.6 EMR, and now they got to go. That seems to be a good idea, to incorporate those provisions into the bylaw. What do you think about that?
Yeah, so yes, and so this bylaw does have some repetition of some things that is in the state regulations. But what it also does is it kind of has some redundancy with the town's own wetland regulations. So as, so let me back up to go forward. Sometimes a town will have a very short wetland bylaw that'll broadly protect a lot more area than the State Wetlands Protection Act. And that's playing on-- area than the State Wetland Protection Act, and that's plain on its face. And then underneath that, a town will have like 150 pages of wetland regulations that seem that they're much more thick and complex. I think an effort here, as Brittany suggested, is to take away some of that mystery and bring some of the technical details that exist only in regulations and bring them out to the forefront so that there's more predictability for not so much even builders, per se, because builders should have professionals on their staff that help them wade through this, but just Joe homeowner, when they want to do some smaller project to kind of demystify it and provide a little bit more upfront advice through the bylaw itself rather than through the thickness of the regulations. So I think that was a goal that Brittany and the Conservation Commission had here, and part of what, what we worked on pretty closely in my office and along with Brittany was to make sure that they synced up well, and there was, there wasn't any gaps there. And in fact, some overlap was good, and we just wanted to make sure that there was no inconsistencies.
From a legal standpoint, do you see any areas of concern in this bylaw? In terms of its, you know, enforceability, being upheld in, you know, courts and stuff like that?
No, again, this is not an atypical, there are towns throughout Massachusetts and including towns on the Cape and the islands that have much more complex and broad local bylaws that where you could run into trouble and people could claim a taking or this and that. This one is pretty much down the middle, so to speak, of what towns are doing for a more stringent bylaw. And the, the way the cases have shaked out or shook out on this is that, you know, most of the kinds of provisions that we're seeing here, protection for isolated wetlands, buffer zones, and vernal pools are pretty, pretty straightforward things that are pretty tried and true in terms of regulation and met legal muster.
Just as an aside, there was a case, the first time I ever heard the word vernal pool. Had to go back to 1980s, honest to God, and it was, the case was the Farber case, F-A-R-B-E-R, and it was up in, I think around Chatham. And Peter Farber was an attorney up there, and I think his wife actually owned the property. And they wanted to develop it, and there was some allegation that there was either a, I think it was a frog, but it could have been a salamander, but I think it was a frog. There was an endangered species that was habitating a vernal pool, swear to God, back in the 80s. And I think after several appeals, Farber lost the case, and he wasn't able to build. So I know, I mean, that's the first time and last time I ever heard of it. It's not something, but now it seems to be coming back as a, what should I say, more pronounced wetland issue. But it, it, it did go back, honest to God, back in, you look it up, I'm sure you can find it if you Google it, it's F-A-R-B-E-R is the last name, but it was.
Yeah, I know Peter well.
Habitatting a vernal pool.
Yeah, I, I'm, I know, I've known Peter for years.
You know the case?
Yeah, I do, I do, and, and I know Peter from my, all my work in Chatham, too. You know, vernal pools are, there's certainly been a lot more science recently on the richness of vernal pools and the loss to habitat that happens when you don't protect vernal pools. I, I mean, I'm, I'm neutral on what the town chooses to do here. I'm just pointing out that there is a lot of science in terms of the value of protecting these small depressions that are generally fed by groundwater and not streams. And so there's a lot of science on it, which is why we're seeing a lot more towns adopt a few more protections for vernal pools.
Okay, great. I'm gonna go to the board, see if they have questions or concerns. Mark?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Mark.
Okay, great, thank you. First of all, I'm, I'm glad to see the revision. I think the coastal resiliency area is just in such, the, the regulatory and policy environment is just loaded with so much change right now. The state's looking at a series of policies, initiatives, rules, and regulations restricting development in those areas, and I think it's helpful to sort of let things settle a bit so that we can see how any future changes in that, in those areas can be looked at in the context of some of the other things that the state's trying to do. So I think this, this move in this direction makes a great deal of sense. The, the thing that I, you know, I'm glad we're talking about vernal pools, and I'm glad we're talking about wetlands tonight, and, you know, maybe we should be spending more time talking about wetlands and protecting our wetlands. I'm, I'm just curious, and I'd, and I'd like the, the folks from the Conservation Commission to respond to this. If, if we go ahead and Town Meeting approves this, does this change in our bylaw provide any additional protections to the Milpon marshes? This is the important wetland area between Camp Street and Yarmouth Road that has been really drained by the town of Barnstable. They've done some excessive water pumping in this area, and, and that's been going on for years. It's an area that is owned by the town. It's under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission in terms of being its steward, but the town has really sort of ignored a lot of the changes or turned a blind eye to some of the changes in this ecosystem. And I would suspect there were probably at one time vernal pools in this area. I can recall as a kid, I could go on boat rides out to this marsh, but you, you can't do that now because there's barely any water or barely any wetland in the marshes. So I'm just curious, does this bylaw change mean that we can actually find a way that you either restore or protect that area from being harmed any further?
That's a good question, and I'm not directly familiar with that ecosystem, but, so I missed one slide, and it was who will be impacted, but those vernal pools will still, would have to exist now for this bylaw to impact that area. If they had already been destroyed and don't exist anymore from the alterations that have been done to that system, we, this bylaw wouldn't be able to hold anyone accountable and have them recreated. So, I mean, the, the changes from this bylaw would only affect new projects that are submitted after the bylaw goes into effect. So if there's already a structure or something within the buffer zone to a vernal pool that would be regulated now, it wouldn't be impacted by our bylaw because it already has been changed. I'm not sure if that answered your question, but.
No, that's, that's, that's a, that's a big help, and I, and I appreciate that. My hope is, is I'm just very frustrated with the dramatic changes that have occurred in this very important conservation area in town, and, and, you know, we've done basically nothing to protect it, and, you know, it's, it's, it's quite sad. And my hope is at some point we can focus some attention on it and maybe work with Town Council to find a way to make sure that something is done to prevent that resource from being degraded any further. I mean, the town of Barnstable has a huge water supply system, literally right on the edge of it. It pumps 3 million gallons a day of water, and, you know, the, this water department and water system has had a history of depleting ponds all along that part of the Cape. The Mary Dunn ponds at one time were completely depleted, but the Conservation Commission in that town took aggressive action in stopping that from happening. So for whatever reason, I'm just hopeful that somehow we can adopt an, a prudent set of rules and regulations to protect vernal pools in our wetland areas, particularly those that have been severely impacted, and using them as a tool to maybe bring them back in some way. So it sounds like we won't be able to use this bylaw to help restore and protect that area, but maybe there's a way to protect it from being further degraded. I just want to put that on the table. It's, it's, it's very, very sad, and I think it's, it's a sad story in the town of Yarmouth. I'm glad, trust me, I'm glad that we're actually taking the step. I think this proposal makes a great deal of sense. It's just unfortunate that we can't utilize this bylaw or the tools to undo what has been an environmental act, an act of environmental destruction in an important part of Yarmouth.
Yeah, we'll certainly put it under, sorry, our radar and investigate what's happening there. I just am not personally familiar with it, so we'll, we'll look into it, definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, Mark?
No, that's it, that's it. I, I support the changes. I'm glad we're having a discussion. I think there's a lot of public education that needs to be done on it, and I think tonight's an important part of that process, so I really very much appreciate members of the Conservation Commission coming before us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for presentation. The one question I had was the one that you actually just addressed, which was impact. That's the one I think that's gonna pop up at Town Meeting. How is this gonna impact my property? Particularly for those who have already built or have plans in place. So you've, you've addressed that, you said it will have no impact to properties that have already been built upon, and, you know, I hope that's made clear certainly at Town Meeting to help people understand, you know, what could possibly have a dramatic effect on their property. So, yes, I think we're all excited about the idea of protecting these vernal pools, but certainly, you know, we're balancing that against individual property rights. So it's a, it's a tough balance to come through, and, you know, you've, I think you've done a good job of balancing the interests here. And I look forward to the other component of this, the, the piece that you took out eventually returning with some semblance of guidance for the town and for its residents. Thank you.
Jorgis.
You've put a lot of hard work into this. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I appreciate your time being here 9 o'clock at night. It shows your dedication of you, you committee members, and thank you. I like the idea of the, developing the bylaw and the regulation jointly. You know, I think you're saving a lot of confusion this way. I think it's gonna go a long way to cleaning up a lot of those questions that somebody might have out there. Hard to believe we haven't really touched this since 1987. I think it's due, definitely, and I fully support all that you're talking about today. Thank you.
Any comment from our Town Administrator or Assistant Town Administrator?
No, I, I would say that this is a long time coming, this bylaw update. I, I think Brittany had pointed out, you know, some of the work that the CONCOM was doing on this goes back to at least 2021. I know that, I, I worked with Kelly Grant, who was interested in, in this as well, and I, I think Brittany's just done a great job in terms of highlighting these changes, and they're very necessary. I mean, the perfect example is the Rivers Act. It's a different buffer zone than from traditional wetlands, and it is a law, but it doesn't say that in the bylaw. You have to kind of sift through a couple of different laws and regulations, and when people find that out, you know, it's the type of a lack of transparency that causes frustration because people generally become frustrated with, you know, the wetlands laws, the laws that they don't know, you know, as deeply as some of the other, you know, building code types of issues. And I, I see this as a very logical extension of our current wetlands bylaw to make sure the regulations are more transparent, make sure the Rivers Act components are in there and the vernal pools. And I, I do think that, you know, rather than making it more difficult, you know, for people to do projects, and Brittany pointed this out herself, you know, if you have all of the regulations in one place upfront in a bylaw that anyone can see, it's gonna make their application stronger, and hopefully it's, it's gonna make the process smoother. So I, I support it wholeheartedly, and, and also the comments regarding the coastal resiliency piece. I think Mark, you know, brought out the, you know, there's a lot of new state regulations, there's a lot of moving parts right there. You know, maybe the best thing to do is make these improvements, strengthen the process, and then we'll continue to work with the Commonwealth, see exactly what's happening with their own coastal resiliency regulations, and potentially that can inform our own local efforts and, you know, somewhere along the lines that, that we'll be able to act in a way that really assists local residents in fully understanding the whole regulatory environment that surrounds it. But this is a great step, and I think they did a great job, and I thank Brittany.
Bill?
I think this is great work in a sense, and Bob mentioned it, you know, 1987, there's been a lot of changes in the Wetlands Protection Act and the CMRs since then, so the Rivers Act alone is a pretty big change. So to reconcile our local bylaws and documents to that means that the applicant isn't trying to figure out what do they need locally and what does the state need. So this is really important, and it needs to happen on a regular basis as the state makes changes or we see need for further changes. I think putting the regulations and the bylaw together are a good idea. You're just gonna watch out for, if you want to change things like the number of copies of plans, do you want to go to Town Meeting to do that? Because the regulations can be changed by the commission, the bylaw needs Town Meeting. So there's a sort of a line at which you push regulations and bylaw just so you make sure that you don't have to go to Town Meeting to change really minor things. But, you know, it's a great job, and 1987 is a, is a long time to.
Couple haircuts ago.
Couple haircuts. I, I, I know at least four or five iterations in other places I've worked, you know, since 87 in state law that now is in our bylaw, so.
Jay, anything you'd like to say?
No, I, I mean, I'm gonna continue to support, I'll be at Town Meeting to help explain it. Some of this stuff can be pretty nuanced. I've done a lot of wetlands work for communities. I sat on my own Conservation Commission, so I'm happy to help, you know, kind of demystify and translate wherever I can to help the, the Board, the CONCOM, and Town Meeting understand what's being presented.
All right, thank you. Any concluding remarks by our director or commi, commission?
No, just thank you for your time, and we look forward to bringing this back at Town Meeting and having all of the community on board.
All right, well, I thank all of you for being here, and thank you for your hard work, and I thank you for the work that you'll be doing between now and Town Meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank Brittany for all the hard work that she's done, which was a driving force for us, too, at the commission.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, very good. School budget update. Before we dive into that, very important agenda item, there was a meeting held a few weeks back at the school with the superintendent, school committee chair, Dennis Finance Director, Dennis Board Chair, et cetera, and a complimentary contingency from Yarmouth with myself representing the Board and Bob being the Town Administrator and so forth. Bob really has a good grasp on the origins of the situation we find ourselves in today. He did a good job addressing some possible roots of resolution of the problem, or at least an abatement of it in terms of trying to close the deficit. But just so you know, what was not done, and Bob made it perfectly clear, that if something be, if there's some kind of arrangement that the two towns can come to and the school district prior to Town Meeting, that nobody at that meeting was speaking for the full Board, that whatever it was, it would be coming back to you guys to be fully considered. And I think that's important that you know that because. that you know that because, um, there's a lot of, he was just throwing ideas out there. You might wanna consider this, you might wanna consider that. If you consider this, this is the dollar reduction that would result, things like that. Um, school committee did not indicate that they were in agreement with any of it. They just, uh, you know, there was a lot of people articulating their various positions. Um, so having said that, um, what I envisioned Bob telling us about tonight is a summary of where we are in terms of, at least the very, as of today, as a substantial budget deficit with the schools, um, how it came to be, or some of the driving forces behind it, what are some possible remedial actions that could be considered, um, by all involved, particularly the school committee, to reduce the deficit. And, uh, that's pretty much it, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so. And to discuss, you know, the, the, the revenues that exist and the whole proportionality of that. Listen, before I, I really started, I, I wanna recognize and acknowledge our finance director, Jennifer Mullen. Now, she and I have, um, obviously done a tremendously deep dive into the budget, the finances, the revenues of school, and, um, I, you know, we've worked extremely well together on it, and I, I really cite her efforts to kind of expand my own abilities in this area, because when there's two people, you know, that are, um, on it, I, I just feel like we have a very strong team here in town, and Jennifer's a big part of it, and she's done a great job. You know, she would've been here this evening, but one of the luxuries now, we get to split a little bit up the duties. Um, she's gonna be at an evening meeting tomorrow with the finance committee, reviewing the same type of data, but, um, you know, if, if you have any other questions, you know, she's always a good resource. But I, I did wanna acknowledge her efforts. And, um, the board met with the superintendent of schools, and it was very early this month, to receive that initial presentation on the budget. So, we have seen some, some of the data, and as the chairman indicates, on February 15, we were, um, called to a meeting, um, along with the, the chairman of the school committee, superintendent, business manager, and the officials from the selectmen finance committee and administration from, from Dennis. So that was Thursday, um, February 15, and what I'd like to do is, from, from the information is, first of all, is summarize where we stand with the, um, the school budget, what the issues are, and, um, hopefully talk about a little bit what we may be able to do to make the experience, uh, the, the most positive that we can for our community and, and the district as a whole. Um, first and foremost, uh, it's, it's clear that there's a very serious problem with the school budget from going from FY '24 to '25. And, uh, the reasons for that, there's, uh, four items that, you know, summarize the entire problem with the, with the increase. And, um, first is they have, the cost of living increases for their existing contracts, um, is over $2 million. So, that is not inconsequential within the, the, the overall percentage of the, of the school department. So, it's, I, I would say maybe a, a larger-than-average COLA and, and changes for, um, all of the positions across the system. Just having the $2 million there, you know, would be a, a pretty expensive nut. But in addition to that, there were additional contract negotiations that were around the subject of increasing the length of the school day. And, um, those negotiations were successfully resulted in a financial settlement that, uh, the amount is about 1.7 million. So, you, you have the, you know, the, the COLA that's extensive already. Now, you have to add 1.7 million to that, uh, to fully fund the cost of the contractual obligations, whi- which include that 1.7 million for a longer school day. And, and, and those two numbers, you know, create a problem in and of themselves.
Can I stop you for one second there? Is this a state mandate that they have to extend the day? I mean, where does this extension of the day come from?
They surveyed other schools and found that they were on the short side, basically, and it was kind of like, keep up with what everybody else was doing, wasn't it?
Yeah. And, and I, you know, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the, the educational system, but, you know, it was explained to us that, um, the, the need was felt, um, at the school department level, that having a longer school day would be beneficial to the students. So they sought to do that and achieve the settlement to do that. The, I, I think the unfortunate thing for us is that the planning for the financing of that settlement fell a little bit short, that, um, together with the COLA, uh, it created an, an additional need for funds that, um, the source of which was not immediately, um, known. And, and so that, that's why, you know, we, we have these items, although they're, they're all sort of self-done, they, they compound the problem. So, you know, you're, you're over 3.7 million on, on just the contractual items. And, and the other sort of big problem is that there are, um, positions, and this is only a portion of the, the funds that they call the ESER, which is the federal COVID-19 funds for school departments, um, was in the school budget, maybe 2 million or so, a little over, and, and there are $1,250,000 of that that are in, um, 16 positions that the school would like to see retained. So, um, and, and I think that, you know, a comparison on the town side, uh, we had the ARPA funding, which is the town government, uh, version of the ESER. Um, we knew those funds were gonna expire in 2024. It means extraordinary clear, crystal clear. And, and for that reason, um, we saved those funds for only capital improvements, one-time types of things, funded wastewater with them, but we did not fund any positions. And, and the school department was, was caught, as were, you know, some other districts with having a, a fairly large amount of those funds tied up with salaries that are ongoing. So, you, you know, add up the, the 2 million on the COLA and the 1.7 million on the school day, and, and just the portion of those positions that, that are in the, uh, federal funding of 1.25, you're up around $5 million of new money. Now, in addition to that, there are, uh, an additional category that could be termed, um, inflation, increase in overhead costs in insurance, and that's about another 1.5 million. So, um, the bottom line is, that's where, um, the superintendent was when he met with the board of selectmen, um, early in his budget process, that he forecasted that those increases totaled about 6.5 million, which was just over 9% in terms of the salary growth. Now, um, or budget growth. The, the problem that, that you have is that, um, you know, the, the communities, I, I can speak for, for Yarmouth, were right up against Prop 2.5. So, we do not have an additional 6 million or, um, 9%, anything like that. We have the 2.5% growth in the revenue. So, as you can see, that it creates, um, a very drastic budget shortfall. And, so, um, the school presented that they, that, that was their initial, um, piece, and, and they went back and, and had reductions, primarily a lot of staff reductions, over $2 million worth of those, and, and came in with a revised budget from the last time they met with the, the selectmen, that is down from the 6.59% uh, increase to, um, a budget increase of 4.8 million, which is a 6.7% increase. And what that would mean for the town of Yarmouth is that, um, they would be looking for an increase in their assessment of 2,734,000. Now, that's over 7% of an increase, and I, and we still have that, that same problem. And, and again, um, you know, I call out that, that there's a policy that, um, the board has adopted that we will reserve, uh, growth level of 2.5% for the schools, and anything over that would be an override, but, um, that 2.5% is like 971,000. So that leaves a shortfall of 1,763,000, just on the Yarmouth side. And it was, it was our, our feeling in looking at it, that even that was too much to, um, approach for an, an override. And, so with a problem of that magnitude, I mean, it's very clear that we needed an all-hands-on-deck approach to solving this type of problem. It wasn't anything that we could just, um, you know, put a magic wand on and, and solve. And, you know, someone had suggested even at the meeting this evening, well, why don't you use your free cash? And, you know, unfortunately, that is not a realistic scenario, because the free cash revenues are one-time revenues. And if you put the free cash to support these operating budgets, it's just like the federal money. You don't have it next year, and now you set yourself up for a, a massive deficit. So, so that's clearly not, not the solution. But, one of the things...
Be funding recurring expenses with one-time revenue.
With one-time revenues, which was done to get us to this point. And that's a big part of the, the problem.
Can I stop you for a second again with a quick question? Um, the 16 positions that they talk about that are ESER-funded, are those positions that were created at the time of COVID?
I honestly do not believe so. I, I, I think that, I think that it extends to additional positions, um, that are important to the school department, and, um, you know, positions that, that they need to move forward. So it wasn't people to hand out masks or to, um, you know, just nursing or something of that.
In, in defense of that position, the superintendent made a remark to the effect that, when you get this kind of money, you, you can't just buy pencils and paper. You have to invest it in people.
And the reduction in staff, are those FTEs, or is that just the individual themselves that they're talking about?
Um, the full-time equivalents, that there's pretty significant, uh, and, and they're listed out in the material that you have in your packet.
So those are FTEs?
Yes.
So they're talking about getting rid of, um, two full-time school resource officers after we've just had the fire and police department telling us?
Correct. That was one of the, and, and that, I think cuts the SRO's program in half. They'll be down to two. There's four total in the school system now. This would mean they would have two.
And that only covers the intermediate middle school and, uh, high school?
Correct.
So currently what we have are two officers in the middle school and two officers who are in the high school. Isn't that what we have?
I thought the high school was one.
It's one. There, there has been, um, a new one that's been, that's been up there.
They have, they have, I, I'm just looking at them from the regional school district. They have a Dennis police officer and they have a Yarmouth police officer in, um, in the senior high school. So that's their two FTEs. I don't think we have more than, than that from Yarmouth. I think it's one from Yarmouth, one from Dennis.
Now, there, there's, uh, um, there's, I, I think two from Yarmouth, and, and then there's like, uh, another position that they were, um, the, the Yarmouth PD was funding some additional hours over there for their own, um, you know, help with, with things. And, and it was proposed that, that that was a position that was gonna be picked up by the, um, school district next year. Uh, but now what they're saying is that they're just gonna fund the two.
So as the city of Brockton is asking for the National Guard to come in and assist them with security problems, they're talking about cutting back on the police force?
Correct. So, um, with that, that type of, of problem, uh, you know, I, I, I think that, one of the things that, that we did learn is that, um, in order to get, uh, a solution to this issue, it's gonna require a lot of very close communication and cooperation between town of Dennis and the town of Yarmouth, and both communities and the, and the school district. It's a situation that, you know, it's easy to find fault with the school department, that, you know, they set up all of these expenses and had no money to pay for them. It's easy for the school department to come in and say, well, you're not giving us the proportionate share of your growth in revenue over the past five years, and you're underfunding us. And, and the finger pointing, you know, could, um, you know, take on monumental proportions when you, you get these situations. Um, I feel that we need to try to work to develop some type of successful outcome, or else what we risk is negatively impacting all of the town services. If we have this big break with the school where, um, like, it's clear that there's not enough revenue that is, um, in the town's coffers to solve this problem, that, um, if part of the process is gonna definitely require, you know, some type of ballot action to override Prop 2.5 at some level, which we can talk about that. But, um, you know, the, the key thing is if, um, you know, we create an atmosphere, right, of whether it's fear and distrust that, that we're unable to solve this problem and present a rational solution, what, what winds up happening is that, um, you can, you can see appropriations being made in excess of what funds the town has, and then being forced to come back and, um, lay off the very, never mind the SROs, the very police and firefighters that are doing the, this, this training. And, and I think that a, a lot of that's my motivation. I, I think we need to avoid that at all costs, that we can't have a situation here where we're sacrificing all of our town services to make up for, um, a shortfall in the school department. So, to that end, uh, one of the things that, that I had worked on is getting a hold of the Dennis, you know, folks and, and engaging where they sat on some things very early in the process. And I've outlined, uh, what a roadmap would look like for the type of cooperation that I see that would be necessary in order to kind of bridge this gap. And it kind of gets to it, um, I've got three kind of quick exhibits. Then the, the first one was the, the school department numbers. And, and the second one is your third page in on the packet. It's, uh, it titled "The Scenario for Addressing the FY '25 Shortfall" in it. And it points out what the school budget's request was that we talked about, that 6.7% increase, and the proposed assessments, um, where Dennis, it's proposed at, at 918,000, and Yarmouth, uh, 2.7 million. And, and I, and I think the, the, the key thing that I was trying to impress, uh, upon the participants in this meeting, that there is absolutely not one strategy that is gonna be successful in, in bridging this gap. If you try to just cut it from the school budget, you're gonna have impacts on your educational system, um, that no one in the community would be proud of. If you're just gonna increase the amount of money that the town gives, you know, you're gonna decimate other local services. So clearly, there has to be a coordinated strategy that has not one part, but a series of linked strategies that gets us closer to bridging the gap and, and not just make the gulf wider. And what, what I proposed from, um, on the, the strategy from the Yarmouth side is, we start with, with their, their 2.7 million request with the amount of money that we've reserved for the school budget increase in a DY just district, um, so far has been 971,210. That's, that's a 2.5% increase. Now, that leaves a shortfall balance for Yarmouth of 1.7 million, roughly, a little over that. And in scouring our budgets, one of the, um, issues that comes up is that we've also reserved an increase, same percentage for the Cape Cod Tech budget. Now, their assessment has come in just under 300,000 less than what we've set aside for them. So, I would propose first and foremost that the town of Yarmouth has the ability to increase the contribution above the 2.5% that we've reserved by 300,000. And, um, that is from the funds that we have left over from the Cape Cod Tech reserve that, that they didn't need. Um, so it doesn't come out of public safety departments or anything. And, in addition, uh, I think it's critically important that if we're addressing, a big part of this problem comes from the loss of these federal funds, that what we're looking... that what we're looking for from the school department is a step-down use of their own surplus, which they generated, quite honestly, as a result of having those extra Esser funds in. If you recall, last year, we had a level of the excess and deficiency fund in the school district that was at a historically high level, in excess, in fact, of what the state allowance is. And in addressing that, we partnered with the school department to create stabilization fund for capital for the school of, it was $2.2 million that they kept in their stabilization, which they have now. Now, a year later, after taking that entire $2.2 million, they have back to another excess and deficiency amount of $1.8 million. So there's $4 million in two years of surplus funds that, you know, were floating around. And what I feel that we need in order to be able to meet this, they call it the Esser Cliff, right? Where we went from having a couple of million dollars in the budget to having nothing, is that I'm asking the school department to use the excess and deficiency funds that they have now, that 1.8 balance, just use, create a three-year program that's a step-down program that provides $500,000 in year one toward reducing that overall deficit for both towns. And that is stepped down next year to $250,000. And in the third year, it steps down to zero. And, you know, we'll have to make up those funds, but we'll have a three-year period to make up that full $500,000 in the budget rather than having it all jammed in one single year. And my calculation, and it's just a very rough calculation, that on that $500,000, that it roughly would split out $300,000 against Yarmouth's assessment and $200,000 against Dennis's assessment. In the real math, it's probably around $335,000 for Yarmouth. But just rounding it off to that $300,000, if we're able, and the whole idea is what we're trying to do is we're trying to reduce that $1.7 million shortfall down to as manageable a number as possible and then seek a Prop 2 and 1/2 override for a smaller amount. So if you use an additional contribution of $300,000, you use $300,000, which is a little higher than that, of the excess and deficiency contribution as a step-down. And again, this has to be against their operating assessment, not against the debt exclusion we already have. Then added to that, we've talked to the school department, again, with the communication, and been able to, we have $158,000 worth of free cash that we're devoting to capital items in the school for FY25. There's a little more than that, but out of the capital that we're devoting of free cash, that we feel we can move $158,000 out of that capital into their operating budget. And if you take that $1.7 million, and as you can see, if it's a $2.7 million, you put up your $971, then you put up your $300,000 for additional. Then you put up from another pot, the E and D money of $300,000. And then from a fourth pot, $158 for free cash from the school capital article. Now you've got the shortfall balance down to $1 million from $2.7. That's a long travel. It takes a lot of cooperation to get there. And then the last idea is from that $1 million, the school looks at their budget again, sees if there are any additional reductions that can be made, and that we apply all of those methods together to have a proposed override that is less than a million. In, you know, a perfect world, we could get it down to $750,000 or so. But that would have to be dependent on the school department's ability to locate additional cuts. They have cut $2.5 million or so out of the budget request already, but the feeling is that they could potentially do a little more. And if that path is followed, the idea would be that we would present to town meeting a school budget that incorporated this method into it, had a shortfall of between $750 and a million that they would seek for an override, and we would make that appropriation contingent upon a Prop 2 and 1/2 override. But the idea would be, is that if we were able to work together and cooperate to get that shortfall down to an acceptable amount for an override, my hope is that the school committee and the board of selectmen could join together in supporting that amount for the override and have a common front and, you know, allow it to be put to the voters. And the last piece, you know, we talked about there has been this discussion of, you know, the town says that we're going to reserve 2.5%, but you have a lot more money than 2.5%. Why are you limiting the contribution to 2.5%? Your budget looks like it's going up 5%. Why don't you give us 5%? Because that's your proportional share. And what I've done in the last piece of analysis is, I think it's critically important to, you know, to look at those issues and to be able to talk about them. And what I would say is that it's true that the town budget has some growth in it that's in excess of the 2.5%. Could maybe a couple of percent worth of growth. But I think it's important to note that you have to break down the revenues of where these increases are coming from. And the growth in the budget that we have is coming from single-purpose revenues that are raised to provide services. For example, there's increases in the water department fees that have been increased by the board of selectmen to cover the cost of the capital because we've done a lot of capital to keep that system up. And we have to pay for it by having higher water fees. Now, that money can't go to education. That's for water. The same thing is we're adding money to the wastewater budget. There's a new assistant superintendent, a lot of new spending in wastewater that's all from the wastewater enterprise fund. A third item, there's a nice big chunk of additional funds from ambulance receipts that are helping to fund the additional firefighters that we need. We had to split up, remember, over two years. So those revenues don't apply to the educational contribution. What I've done is I've gone into the town budget, and again, you know, Jennifer and I, you know, we work on this together. So what we're looking at is I've broken down the local estimated receipts, which are all the general receipts that can go towards town budgets, the motor vehicle exercises and all of that laundry list of those, remember, total, you know, maybe 20% of the town's budget, and the property tax increases completely. And just going from 24 to 25, the new money that the town has available, it's not a 2.5% increase, it's 3.268. So the growth that we've had in the local estimated receipts gives us a little more leeway that we can devote towards the educational system. And, but I would say this, is that if you take a look at the application that, say, you give the schools a 3.28 as opposed to a 2.5, that equals $1.269 million. And the strategy that I've outlined provides town funding to the school system additional from the previous year of $1,429,710, which is 3.68%, which is higher than the 3.268, which would be their proportional share of all the new revenues. And the reason we've done that is because, for all of the reasons that we talked about, the school is in a particularly tough spot this year. So we're giving them cash, I think, a greater share of the proportional revenues than meets their budget, not by a ton, but by a pretty good amount. And then in addition to that, hoping to find a level that we can support ballot initiative that would close the gap. And I think that the other piece that we talked about is that we absolutely need a three-year planning process and look ahead with the school department. You know, to Superintendent Smith's credit, he came in and, you know, he met with me and he saw me, and then he came in and he met with his board well in advance of the normal school budget process. But it was still after my budget process was done because remember, by charter, I have to have a budget balance recommended to the board of selectmen by January 1. And we met in January. And the thing is that if a budget increase is going to come in at 9%, I need to know about it-
Well in advance.
-three years, three years in advance. We need to plan. How, what are we going to do? What changes are we going to make to make this happen? Because what happened this year is that by the time we received this information in January, and we did not receive it last year, the types of changes that could have been made, you know, could no longer be made. Now, all we can do is, you know, potentially lay people off or something like that. And that's what we don't want to do. So that's what we've presented with the school department. Now, they didn't agree to use the addition, the step-down of the E and D funds, that 500, 250, 0. We asked them to consider that, and they agreed that they would consider that. So I thank them very much for considering that. But we're very hopeful, and it was very clear that that had to happen. And so we're very hopeful that that's part of the cooperation that we'll receive. The school department indicated that it may not be possible to have additional cuts. They indicated that they would study that. And, you know, I applaud their study of that. I hope that they're successful in coming up with something. And so this is what we've asked. So I think it's the type of thing, as you can see how this is coming out, no one is harmless here. Dennis is going to have to take a hit. Yarmouth, we're taking a hit. And the school department is going to have to take a little bit of a hit too. And I think if everybody does that together, it's possible to get out of this in good enough shape that we can grow from here. So that's-
The $1 million, what would that be for an override then? What you come down to as opposed for override?
The million is, you know, a million added to the levy. It's, I have it figured out. It's like a hundred and something dollars for, you know, a $600,000 house. I have it all calculated out.
But I mean, when you go to the voters, you have to say that's going to be X amount of override, percentage override. What's the percentage override? Are we going to have to go back and ask them for an override in order to meet your $1 million? Or are you saying that between all three parties?
Absolutely.
Right, so how much is that percentage?
He's talking about best-case scenario resulting in about a $1 million override.
Right. And so roughly, what would that be percentage-wise to the voters?
Well, it would be a small percentage of the overall taxes. That, keep in mind, our tax levy is over $70 million. So it's about 70 million. So it's 1 million on 70, it's 1/70th.
Okay.
So it's-
Okay.
And I have, I made some calculations that I didn't want to put too fine a point on the number now because I don't have the final number of what the override is going to be looking for. But I can calculate it to how many dollars it costs the average taxpayer, how many dollars on the tax rate that is. And it's not onerous. And I think that that was what the whole idea was. Any, see, our bias is against having any overrides if we can have them. And I felt what we needed to do is try to limit this override as much as possible. But I don't see a way out of having any override. Those items are just too large.
Right. Okay, so how is Dennis on going forward with this?
Okay, I can maybe make a couple of comments on that. Dennis seems to be, well, let me back into the answer. Nobody has responded to these suggestions that Bob has made other than in a general way about, well, yeah, maybe we can use E and D funds. Maybe we can look at additional cuts, things like that, maybe. And there was others in the room saying, no, I won't support any more cuts, especially the chairman of the Dennis School Committee. But in another, on another level, I think Dennis was generally supporting Yarmouth's position that we can't go in with this kind of a number, it's just too big. The chair of the Dennis School Committee mentioned there was one member that wanted them to use a much higher amount from the E and D funds to try to bring this within balance. What was that number, 800 or 900?
Dennis said someone had suggested use 800,000. And, but, you know, I would say my program is, again, when it comes to use of the E and D, I don't favor a single-year program.
No.
I've got, mine's worth 750, but you have to have a step-down. And I think that that's what creates stability for the educational system. And we have to make up the, you know, stepping down from 500 to 250, you know, we're going to have to make that up next year so that the school budget is not going to decrease. But I think we can. You know, that's the thing, is when you have such a big problem, sometimes it needs a couple of years to do.
Absolutely. And I'm just saying, we can't, what we're looking at here, I see us talking about this again next year and the year after that. And we can't, in all fairness to the voters, you know, like, and a lot of folks in this town, me included, are on fixed incomes. You know, like, there's just so much in the pot, you know, that you can work with. And you have to give these people an opportunity to plan for what's going to be coming. You know, and so I like your idea of looking at a five-year plan. We definitely have to look at a five-year plan, I think.
The Dennis, to fully answer your question, the Dennis chair did recommend looking at, what I would characterize it, you know, what he was trying to get as top-heavy administration in the middle school, in the intermediate school. He said, why do we need to assist principals? Superintendent didn't like that. His response was kind of like, it's not your place to tell me where to make my cuts. But I would say overall, and Bob, you correct me if you disagree, that Dennis was generally in harmony with the way Yarmouth was proceeding. Not with respect to the specific remedial actions, but this is just too big of a number, you got to look at other things. Maybe we got to look at more E and D, maybe look at more cuts. Maybe, you know, as again, he suggested, you had some top heaviness in the administration, things like that. So I don't think there was any conflict between the two towns.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that question is if we go back to 2008, the horrible year. I mean, that's our horrible Dennis.
Probably.
Ennis. What, if we are united, if Dennis and Yarmouth are going in together and saying to the schools, you know, like, what we're not getting back to is what happened in 2008, where we had Dennis saying yes and Yarmouth saying no, and we ended up paying dearly for that within our town government.
And Bob's had a lot of discussions, one-on-one with their town administrator. What would your response be to the same question that I answered, Bob, in terms of?
My sense from Dennis is, and again, you know, it's difficult to speak for another community. Obviously, you understand, right? Because the finance committee has to take it up and make a recommendation on the budget, right? The board of selectmen has to take it up and make a recommendation on it. But the, you know, individuals that we've been involved with and especially explaining it, you know, to the town administrator and their finance people, I think that there's general consensus around the elements of the strategy and especially with respect to, you know, the use of the E and D funds to cushion the blow, that you can't- that you can't be sitting here saying, oh, we can't use the E and D funds there for like a rainy day. I don't know what, that this is exactly what they're needed for. And I think Dennis felt like there should be additional cuts in the school department. And, you know, to the extent they even suggested some of them. And as you indicated, you know, the school didn't wanna be, you know, told where they come from. And I don't wanna prescribe either, but I just look at it from a structural standpoint. It's too heavy. It's like a balloon, you know? You have to throw a couple of sandbags over. But I would think is that, the one thing I would add to what's being said is that, okay, so we know, we have to have close cooperation and communication with the town of Dennis. But I also believe we need to have close communication and get some cooperation from the school department officials as well. Because again, I go back to what the risk is. And the risk is that people could meanwhile, and you could go to town meeting and you vote more money, right, than you can raise. And that's where you get back to 2008. You see, when you go to those joint meetings and you raise the school budget and you don't have enough money to set your tax rate because you appropriated now too much, what happens is that it puts all of your services at risk. School, police, fire, everybody. So, yeah, I would like to, you know, be as firm and as tough as I can on this issue. But at the end of the day, I think we need to come out of it with an understanding where the town of Yarmuth and Dennis is together and that the school department is willing to go along as well. So that's kinda my goal in this.
I think your approach is admirable. And I think that what I would hate to ever see happen, and it's taking, it's still going on, we don't wanna us versus them situation. I mean, it was ugly, quite frankly, back in 2008. And I think in some ways, we're still paying, that's still happening. And we need to, like you say, sit down and say, all right, we got a problem. It's not gonna go away, and it's not gonna go away in one year either. So let's look at collectively, how can we put a dent in it and make it palatable for the taxpayers at the end of the day?
And Bob was the only one at the meeting that really brought that to the table.
Right, and I think... And we need to get more of that thought process going. And I thank you.
And he waited and waited and gave everybody else the opportunity. This was at the end of the meeting when finally, you know, people were identifying the problem. There was a little bit of finger pointing here and there. No, we don't wanna use E and D. Yes, we wanna use E and D. We should use more E and D. People kind of backing in and preserving their turf. And then Bob said, look, you know, I haven't run this by the board. Here's some suggestions. He's the only one to put those out there.
Thank you, Bob, for doing that. And we just, I think, need to keep trying to, we need to be collaborative. I don't wanna see us being adversarial again. But that's too big a nut for anyone to swallow. What's being proposed right now. I think we can all agree on that one.
He did a great job at the meeting, he did.
So I think tomorrow, they have a school finance subcommittee that is gonna meet on discussing the...
Is that tomorrow, the subcommittee?
Yeah.
I knew it was coming up because they said they were gonna run everything through the subcommittee and then the full school committee after that, right?
Right, and then we're set to, as far as a timeframe goes, we're set to meet with them, I have it on the schedule for March 12.
As part of our meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna have a public hearing on the budget.
It's gonna be the 12th.
And I hope, you know, the strategy works because if it, if it doesn't, it just, I think it puts too much at risk. What we have to do is we have to, you know, minimize the risk to the greatest extent possible. And then we have to ask the voters for some help on it. But, and I do wanna see what this situation is next year because I can't see, you know, out of those big chunks, you know, they're gonna have a cola next year, but they're not gonna have the loss of the federal money. We've taken care of that, and they're not gonna have...
The extension of the school day, they've taken care of that.
Yeah, and we're funding it, the extension of the school day now. So those funds will be available next year, at least continue that. So it's not gonna take another jump.
Right.
And so, but I think it gives us a fighting chance for next year.
But you're also looking at, if you look at their budget, 2% for maintenance and repair for all those buildings.
For all people. And, you know, it's, I have a hard time finding fault with the school department to the extent that they understand that their mission is providing the people to educate the children. And it's a tough nut because they're finding, you know, it's hard to fund all that with Prop 2 and 1/2. And, you know, I truly, I truly believe that their mission, they, you know, they take it to heart. Their mission is the children, and it's extraordinarily important, so.
71% of their budget is people.
Yeah.
If I can say, I have never seen this kind of effort by a town administrator to work with the schools. I've never seen this. I've seen those days when administration was pitted against administration, board against board. I've never seen this. And I think you've hit it on the head. We all have a great deal to lose if we don't come together here. And what you've put together here is a very, very reasonable package. The one question I have is, if we were to go forward, if this were somehow to become codified and approved, is what happens if the override fails?
Back to square one. We're $1 million off. And, you know, there's ways to address it. Hopefully, what you would do is, is you would not just, you know, you'd try to spread it over a couple of years. What you'd be forced to do is either wholesale reductions in staff, because we're sort of the same, we have mostly staff here, not expense budgets, and try to share the pain. But you'd also have to resort to using your one-time revenues over a multi-year period to cut as little as you can. So, you know, because I think what you'd find is, if you were told, well, you have to cut five police and five, five, you know, you can't do that because you don't have enough firefighters to answer the calls now, so you wouldn't wanna do that. So we'd have to come up with some half-baked strategy to sort of keep us alive. But it would take a lot of cuts. So it would hurt the services a lot. If we didn't get that, it would be a big, big problem.
I would hope that if that were to happen, hopefully it doesn't, if that were to happen, that there was some agreement in place, that it would be shared, that one entity wouldn't take the hit to the exclusion of others. You know, we're all in this together, and I just applaud you. I've never seen this kind of effort. I hope the schools appreciate this kind of effort because it's amazing. I've just never seen it. And we all want our schools to be successful. We want to take care of our kids. So we have as much invested in this as our school committee. But we have to work together and we all have to be able to be willing to make adjustments. I really reach out to the school committees, both towns, and ask, please take a hard look at this. This seems like a very plausible, reasonable solution. And it's something that we can present to our voters.
Do we have any board and committee actions tonight?
Not tonight, no, we don't. I think we have to bring up that dreaded word that nobody wants to use is compromise. You know, we're gonna have to compromise here. And, yes, kudos to you, Bob, for bringing it up. And, you know, I can tell you from my perspective, I'm sure it's going for the rest of the board too. Whatever we can do to support it, we're there for you.
Anyone else? Mark, do you have any comments and questions?
Well, you folks really beat this one to a pulp, I'd have to say. I've watched the meetings. I've actually watched them twice. All the budget discussion, I've watched them very closely in the deliberations. And I'd have to say I've been very disappointed in the, in where they've been going. And Bob and I have talked about this quite a bit. And Bob knows I'm very supportive of some of his recommendations, some of his suggestions. You know, the challenge is gonna be, you know, Dorcas talks about compromise. The challenge is gonna be how to get there. Because if you look at the school committee timeline, they, there's nothing on their timeline that suggests they're gonna come back to us and even talk about this, you know? I know Bob says that we gotta go over the budget and go over some other things, but we're gonna have to drag them in here. They don't have us on their timeline, all right? So we're gonna have to be the ones to be aggressive in promoting compromise because they're not in that mindset right now, which is unfortunate. And there is this attitude that somehow free cash, you know, is just, you know, like a bucket of money you can just throw at a problem like this. You know, I've watched very closely how they've characterized this perfect storm. And the perfect storm is, in many respects, of their own making. You know, typically, you use the metaphor perfect storm to characterize acts of God, things outside your control. But that doesn't really apply to this situation. These are developments that have been clearly within their control. Not all of them, but most of them. And so it suggests somehow that this is a perfect storm, is I think, an inappropriate characterization or metaphor. I think Bob's got a very good handle on it. He and Jennifer have really looked at this up and upside and down. And I hope we can get to a point where there's some compromise. I hope we can get to a point where there's some common ground. But I'm not overly optimistic because the other parties have to want to play. They have to want to participate. They have to want to do it. And I just haven't seen that evidence at all. So, you know, I'd like to see us get there, but I just don't see it happening. I think it's gonna be very, very difficult in terms of getting everyone to work this out. There are ways to do it, and I think Bob has talked about some of them. But getting there is gonna be challenging. We need to get the school committee to be more open and interested in some of these suggestions because at the moment, they're not in the right frame of mind to compromise. And so I don't see how this goes without some kind of override. And the question is whether or not we're gonna even be on the same page as that. There needs to be a lot more dialogue, a lot more discussion, a lot more interaction among the key players to get us to that point. Right now, I'm not optimistic. I think we're very far apart. And it's gonna take some really, some heroic efforts to try to turn the situation around. It's like watching a slow-motion train wreck. So I'm very supportive of our town administrators, him taking the lead for us on our behalf. I think he's got, from my point of view, he's diagnosed the situation very well. He's laid out options very well. And I think he's in the best position to speak for us and our board in terms of trying to find a way to get to that common ground. Because we're gonna have to push for it. And we're gonna have to get the two administrators, Yarmuth and Dennis, to be very aggressive in figuring out a way to get the others on board with some of these suggestions. But all I think we can do tonight is to reaffirm our support for our town administrator and our team, our finance director, as they go into these negotiations, for them to know that we stand fully behind them in some of their recommendations and pushing them and trying to find some common ground. The details of how to get there, we can leave that up to them. But clearly, it's not gonna be easy. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, much appreciated, some good comments. Bob, again, my full support and compliments to you for what a good job you've done and are continuing to do on this thorny issue, to say the least. What I'd like to do next, if we could, is skip over the town warrant, come back to that. Dorcas says she has no board and committee actions, right?
Right.
So let's do the agenda review next. I got a method to my madness, which I'll tell you in a minute. Okay, excuse me. Okay, no meeting March 5th because of the primary. Next one's on the 12th. I'm familiar with that Parker's River thing. That's gonna be real quick. Review of Finance Committee Recommendations. Public Hearing on Budget and Capital Plan. That's a big item. And that's where we're gonna take another look at the school budget thing, right, Bob?
Yeah, we're gonna try to get the school officials here for that as well. It should say in the school committee. Usually, they're right a part of that. So I know that that schedule...
That'll be part of the public hearing process?
Correct.
And Concom, review the article, again, which we've done...
We did that already.
Huh?
We did that already, I don't think...
Yeah, we delete that?
Yeah.
Conservation Restriction and Land Management Plan for Higgins Coral Tentative. Planning Board Article Review. So that looks like a pretty full night, right?
Yeah, we might have to read something.
Mark was suggesting we hold that open as an optional date. 26th is our next for sure meeting, right, after that?
Yes.
Library Building Program Grant Application and Project Update Tentative. Waste Water Update. Final Recommendation on Warrant Articles. Will be on the 26th. So we'll be voting all of those articles. The reason I'm skipping ahead is I'm gonna ask the board whether you wanna review those articles again tonight or do you wanna wait and put them in? I mean, how many times do you wanna review them? If you wanna review them tonight, we will, but...
I'd rather wait.
I'd rather wait, yeah. I know it's tempting just running through the motions when everybody's, you know, been through a long meeting and whatever. Excuse me. And then we have time. We have plenty of time to look at them again, and we will. And then we'll run to April 2nd. Open Space and Rec Plant Update Hearing Pirate's Festival Tentative.
I have another item on April 2 that I wanna bring up is that we're gonna do a ballot question. The Board of Selectmen has a deadline to vote ballot questions. Now, I wanna say the deadline for the ballot questions is April 16. But if we've already met with the school, we've already reviewed the town meeting warrant and finalized it, I think you'll be ready on April 2 to decide... I think you'll be ready on April 2 to decide whether there's a question or not and what it is. So, but if you, we'll put it on the agenda, but just know that if you can't do it on the 2nd, that you've got two more weeks to think about it till the absolute deadline.
So the drop deadline is April 23?
I think it's the 16th, although we have no meeting scheduled for that date.
Oh, because it's a holiday.
The 15th is a holiday, but what you've got to take and do is you count back 35 days from the election, that's the deadline for voting a ballot question. So that gets you into the date of April 16.
So tentatively, we may be meeting on April 16?
Or April 9. You know what I mean? One of those dates.
Oh, okay.
But I think we should be fine, schedule it early on April 2, and then if we have enough information, then you can make a decision.
So April 2 will be the earliest, and if we can't do it the 2nd, the 9th?
Yeah, we'd have to have a special meeting to do the ballot question.
On the 9th?
Yes.
If we can't do it on the 2nd, okay. 16th is irrelevant to this, right?
Right.
So that date is the 9th, okay. Possible special meetings. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about on this, on this agenda review?
No, thank you.
No?
No.
Okay. A lot of stuff tonight, good night. Individual items, does anybody have anything? Mark, individual items?
I have tonight.
Dan?
No, thank you.
Dorcas?
No.
I'll pass as well. So that brings us to the consent agenda. You got that, Bob?
We've got, there's the Scally's Irish Ale for the Special Alcohol Extension for St. Patrick's Day Parade Event, and we have a generous donation of $1,000 from the Nicholas G. Zarros Memorial Foundation Fund to the Recreation Division.
Right.
Second.
We need a roll call, right, because of a roll call vote. Mark?
Hi.
Dan? Dorcas?
Hi.
Chair votes high, 4-0, one member absent. Consent agenda is approved. Bob, do you have anything else? I mean, you...
I want to call your attention to the invitation we've got on Thursday, March 14, at 170 South Shore Drive, is our wastewater project groundbreaking ceremony, and we've got the whole communication team and the DPW working on that, I want to thank. Mark Forrest has had phenomenal suggestions, we're trying to put together a program right now, still waiting to see if the governor's going to be able to come, and I've also invited our congressman and senator, and so I'll be working with the chairman to put together, you know, the speakers and things like that, so it'll be a great event. This is a historic event, and we wanted it very nice, so make sure you come out on Thursday, March 14, at 10:00 a.m., and we'll have more information for you as things come together, and I think that'll be a great event for the town, and we're going to have an upcoming wastewater update, so I won't get too into the weeds on that, but, you know, we had yet another session today with the DEP on the groundwater discharge permit, and I can honestly say, I feel like we're making progress.
Okay.
We're not coming up with enough volume for eight phases, but I'll tell you this, we're going to get enough that DEP's going to be happy with for Phase 1, at least. You know, we've got a solid 1.5 million gallons a day capacity between Buck Island and Bayberry Hills Golf Course, and we need more, a little more study of the wetlands, and we filed with the Conservation Commission to enlist their assistance in doing that, they've been tremendous, and I see things, the needle is moving in the right direction, and so we're pushing that, and those are the key things I wanted to mention for today. I will say, on March 6, we've got a great meeting that is going to be with Senator Seer, it's a virtual meeting, on talking about the new housing bill and potential funding that could be available to the town, and so the other couple of little things I can weigh down. I don't know if anyone's seen this, but, you know, we've got, I've been following the storm, and it's been increasing in intensity all week, so tomorrow into Thursday, you know, we could have wind gusts 55 to 60, and a lot of rain, so be careful, everyone, you know? Could see downed power lines and branches and things like that, but it looks like a worse storm than we initially had forecasted.
Not only that, but everything's kind of weak from the heavy snow that they had from the last storm.
Yeah, and thank God that this is not a snow event.
Yes, thank God.
There'll be no snow, we know that.
Thank God for that.
Good remarks, you're adjourned.
So moved.
Second. Give me a second. Dorcas, do you vote?
I vote yes.
Dan?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes?
Chair votes high, it's unanimous, we're adjourned at 10:10.